Okay, you all sound like you're ready for a meeting. Thank you for being here. Would everybody, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Everybody please rise as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Alrighty, I would like to welcome everybody on behalf of the Board of Education. We are going to get started, but it is with great privilege that I bring up Ms. Morgan Cross. Where's Morgan? Morgan is a student at Summit Lakes Middle School, and she is going to sing the National Anthem. So let's go ahead and stand again. Let's keep our hands on our heart, please.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was fantastic, Morgan. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. I'm Phyllis Bologna, and I have the honor of serving as the Board President for 2018-19, and it is an honor to see you all here with us this evening. We've got an exciting Board meeting. Always look forward to having a full house, and nice to see all of our parents. So with that said, Board members, we ready? Let's go ahead. I need an adoption of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Alright, very good. I have Board Member Fritchie, who has made the motion, and Board Member Dennis and Doan, who have kind of did that together. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Excellent, very, very good. We have an adoption of the agenda tonight. The first thing that we do after we adopt the agenda is we turn it right over here to our Superintendent. He's going to give you a Superintendent's Report.
Yes ma'am, Madam President, Board Members, and good evening to our audience. We're super excited this month for the last portion of my Superintendent's Report. Lots of good information in the district, but I will tell you that I'm a little bit tickled having this crew with me on to my right. So we're excited to hear from them this evening. Probably the biggest news that we want to bring forward to you Board Members, you're already aware of, and that's our annual performance report coming from the state of Missouri. We were super excited to learn that we achieved the highest APR total the district has had in this cycle that's called MSIP V. And that number is 99.3%. And if you take a look at the report there, there's some data points that I think are very important. If you recall, our data over the last year or so, several years, there's really been one opportunity for the district to improve its performance, and that's been in the area of subgroup performance. For the benefit of our audience, the state defines our subgroups as students who are free and reduced lunch, students who are Hispanic, students who are Black, students who are English language learners, and students who are special needs. And with that population, it was the only area that the district had not earned its total amount of points available to the district. We had about 82% of the points. This year, we're proud to report that that went up to 92% of the points, taking us to a 99.3 in terms of our APR. So that's super, super exciting, and I think that's worthy of applause and celebration. As the leader, you know, a part of our job is to honor our teachers and our students for the work that they've done, and we definitely do that with eyes wide open into the future. The APR is an interesting matrix, but what I would say to it that you all would need to know is Missouri's standards, although very, very important, that should not be our endgame as a district. Put another way, we can earn 100 points in the APR, and that should be our goal, because it's the highest you can get, but still realize that there are needs in their students that we want to achieve at higher levels. So we'll continue to unpack that. That was going to be a part of our work session this evening, but with our time expired, we'll bring that back to you all next month. But super excited for our teachers and our students and our administrators and all the work we've done to achieve our highest APR in MSIP V. And I said to my Superintendent colleague in Blue Springs, as they sit with 100% of the points, "We're coming." "We are coming. We're right there in your rearview mirror, and we're gonna get there because of good folks like those who are here this evening." The other piece that I want to bring to your attention is Abigail White. Abigail White was named the 50th Annual Missouri Interscholastic Press Association Student Journalist of the Year. Having spent some time with Abigail myself, I can tell you she's more than deserving of this state honor, and we want to celebrate her this evening. Anyone with little kindergarteners do know that Thursday, March 28th, is the infamous kindergarten roundup. So if you know of anyone with a kindergartner that will be participating in our school district, it's time to get started. Do we have an incoming kindergarten on the front row?
Aww.
Alright. March 28th, we'll see you. Five National Merit Honor Scholars: Alaric Chen, Patrick Hugh, Hannah Neo, Allison Salamon, and Isabel Snell. These are students who have received one of the top honors that a high school student can achieve. Alaric is from Lee Summit North, Patrick from West, Hannah from West, Allison from West, and Isabel from West. So if you get a chance to see those students or if you know them, please, please celebrate them in their National Merit Scholarship. Learning for Life is something that we do here in the district to recognize those support staff members and teachers who go above and beyond in terms of their commitment to our young people. And this month's winner was Connie Stephen from Pleasant Lee Middle School. And Stefan, I'm sorry, from Pleasant Lee Middle School. And we're super excited to have her be recognized during the month of January. There were some pieces around your table, place areas, and they're related to our Portrait of a Graduate work. This is this whole vision of what we want for the young people when they leave the district. For those in the audience, please go to our website and look at our Portrait of a Graduate graphic, if you will. There's opportunity to interact with that graphic and kind of click to see what do we mean when we talk about the pillars of that Portrait of a Graduate. You can dig in deeper and learn what does it mean in our minds for our kids to contribute globally? What does it mean for them to think innovatively? What does it mean for them to really know how to build and sustain positive relationships? What does it mean to practice resilience? And how do they achieve beyond school in pursuing this whole balance in their entire lives? So that's something that we're excited about, and we hope that our curricular work and all of the work we do with our young people support this portrait of an LSR VII graduate. March 2nd, right around the corner, is Taste of Lee Summit. It's the biggest fundraiser in our district for our education foundation. Cheryl Frankie and her team have been working extremely hard, and we're looking forward to the gala on March 2nd and what it might do in terms of teacher mini-grants and in terms of scholarship efforts for our students. I'm going to concede the rest of my time to this awesome group of young people who each month, when I get to engage with them, they make me better. They make me better, they make me more courageous as I listen to their voices in terms of what they expect from a place called school. And with that being said, we're going to have a few presenters. And these folks are decision makers. I mean, I talked about a 10-minute presentation and how that really looks. Generally, it looks like one or two people, but man, they're so kind to each other. We want more people to be able to do it. So they get to learn through this experience, and we are excited to have them with us. Leading the presentation and the work is Victoria Binghamman from Lee Summit West. We'll also have Mackenzie Gaddy from Lee Summit North, Zach Garver from Lee Summit High, Ally could not be with us, she is not here today, Bree Barn from Lee Summit North, Fanon Cross and Isaac Greer, both from Summit Lakes Middle School. And they'll have an opportunity to also assist in the introductions of their peers. At this point, I'm turning it over to my courageous, courageous group. They're gonna tell you who they are, what they do, and if they don't tell you enough, I'll prod them to tell you more. Victoria, get it started.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everybody. My name's Victoria Binghamman, and I'm from Lee Summit West. I'm a senior. I'm a part of the Lee Summit R7 Superintendent Advisory Council that we've named LINK. And so for all the Superintendent Advisory Council members, if you want to get up, introduce yourself, your name, and your grade, and what school you go to.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Bree Barn, and I am a junior at Lee Summit North.
Hi, I'm Fanon Cross, and I'm from Summit Lakes, 7th grade.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mackenzie Gaddy, and I'm a senior at Lee Summit North.
Hello, everybody. My name is McCary Taylor. I'm standing in for Ally for Lee Summit High School, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Zachary Garver, Lee Summit High School freshman.
Hi, I'm Isaac Greer, and I'm from Summit Lakes Middle School. I'm in 8th grade.
Hi, I'm Adrian Cleo, I go to Lee Summit West High School. My name is...
LSR VII student and Superintendent LINK, leading innovation, innovating, and navigating our community.
Okay, so LINK is what we named our group, Leading Our Community, Innovating, or Leading, Innovating, and Navigating Our Community, which is essentially our goal overall. And so essentially, how we got here was there was an application process sent out to all the students in the Lee Summit R7 school district. And we sent in a video that was about 30 seconds long talking about why we wanted to be a part of LINK and the LSR VII Superintendent Advisory Council and the changes that we wanted to see in our community specifically. That could be addressed by each student. There were a total of 106 applications with a total of 35 students chosen, those of which that we just introduced ourselves and then some others who weren't able to make it tonight. Okay, so what is LINK? We are 35 students ranging from 7th to 12th grade. As our kind of like group name, we decided to go with LINK, Leading, Innovating, and Navigating in our community. We meet once a month, and we meet with leaders in our community to discuss change and discuss any problems that we seem necessary.
What is our purpose? So we are a voice, a voice for students that they can talk about their problems and issues they face in their schools. We're a diverse community. We recognize and celebrate the diversity in our schools, and we seek opportunity for improvement in the classrooms, clubs, sports, and community. We promote equity, advocating for all students in our schools.
What have we been working on? So we've been working on Teen Summit, and we've been also working on Student Voice on topics such as like schoology and how we feel like it should be used or things that we think could change within that. We've talked about mental health within our schools, equity in our education, and branding and visioning ourselves.
I would like to add to that. In our group, we like to make sure that everybody in the group is talking and that their ideas is heard. So that's one important thing that I believe that happens within our group, because like, for an example, with our name, it took us forever to find out what our name was. And so it took a lot of like conversating, maybe a little bit debating, but at the end, we were all, we were able to work together, bring, you know, that name together, 'cause we're LINK.
Okay, so in addition to that, Teen Summit is one of the biggest things that we've been working on as a group, as that's something that we're gonna move into April. That's our community project that we're working on and our end goal for the school year. And so essentially, what Teen Summit is, is it's an opportunity for students' voices to be heard as well as teachers, business leaders, administration, anybody within our community, parents. And so we invite all of you guys to come out on April 6th, which is a Saturday. It starts at 7:30, which is a lot earlier than a lot of people would like to wake up on a Saturday morning. But anytime between that and 11:45 a.m. at the Missouri Innovation Campus, there's gonna be a student panel, there's going to be food. So if that's an incentive for you to bring your kid, bring your friends, a lot of activities for people to go through, and just a real opportunity for you to connect with your community, to see what's going on in the LSR VII school district, to see the progresses that we're making, to see the changes that we're going to be making in the upcoming school year, are just really important for everybody to be a part of in order for Lee Summit to continue to strive and grow as not only a school district, but a diverse and inclusive community. So come out.
Board members, before these fine young people leave the podium, are there any questions for this group?
I just want to let you guys know, I've got a big night that night, that Saturday night, for an alumni event that I am helping to lead, but I will be there at 7:30 for you all. I can guarantee that.
So I have a question. Tell us more. Mackenzie talked about the work associated with getting to the logo and the name. Talk a little bit about how you got there, and talk a little bit about what does your logo mean?
Alright, so what we basically did was we had different like groups, and in each group, we tried to come up with words that described us and words that, well, we wanted to do an acronym 'cause we wanted it to sound cool. So we just made sure that those certain words went together good enough. And then after we were able to figure out some of the words that we thought were good, some of them were like "The Voice," "The Guardians of the Summit." That one did pass. Goat was one, yeah. So it was just everywhere. So what we did was we really just sat there and thought about like, what is our job? So we're the voice for the students at Lee Summit, I mean, in the Lee Summit R7 school district. So we just wanted to make sure that we were representing nice and well. Our name didn't sound like we were immature, but at the same time, we're kids. Like, that's just how we are. We just wanted to make it sound fun and stuff like that. And so we just, it was a long process. It took us until like January.
Three months.
Three months, three months. And so what we did was we picked those, I'm about to go back to this word. Sorry, guys. We picked these four letters, I mean, these four words for what we truly feel like what we mean and what our job is to do. So yeah.
And one final question. Since we've been together and you're processing through this experience, what does it mean for you to have this level of voice and access to the Superintendent? What does that mean for you as a student in the school district?
I mean, I think that it's not just our voice. It's everybody at our school, definitely. And I think that for us, it's an opportunity that none of us saw coming. And it really like makes us feel like we are involved in the choices that the school board makes for us, you know? It's something that we use every day, and we kind of wanted to be a part of that to see like where can we improve and where we think that it's like deemed to have a conversation about.
They rock.
So I knew something was up tonight in our first session tonight at 4 o'clock. Dr. Carpenter comes bouncing in the room, all excited, and he's got this cool t-shirt on. And I just thought, cool, why don't you guys show the t-shirts? Everybody, stand up again one more time. Dr. Carpenter, you gotta show your t-shirt too. Show your t-shirt. I said I want one of those. That's really cool, guys. Really cool. Love it, love it, love it. Alrighty, very good. At this time, there's time reserved for the President's remarks. I do want to say that it is wonderful to have all of you with us tonight. We also have a viewing audience that may be watching on the video. This meeting is videotaped. What I like to do during this remarks is to bring you, get to know a little bit about the people sitting at the dais. I want each one of them to introduce themselves. We are people that do have the opportunity to make decisions, but I will tell you that we're not in the trenches like your teachers are. We set the decisions and they carry them out. And I tell you, we just talked earlier. We really have, wouldn't you kiddos say, we have the best teachers and staff in anywhere? Wouldn't you say? So let's hear for teachers right now. We have the best. So with that said, I'm just gonna have each one of you introduce yourselves. If you don't mind, just tell them the role that you play in the district. I think it's important for them to get to know who's up here and see who it is. We'll start at this end.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. My name's Deborah Delsem, and I get to be the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, which means I work with our staff and hire all the teachers and staff in the district.
Welcome this evening. I'm Jennifer Kephart, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, and I have an opportunity to work with your elementary principals and teachers.
Hello, I'm David. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, and I get the opportunity to work with all of our secondary school principals, teachers, and leaders.
Good evening. I'm Katie Collier. I am the Associate Superintendent for Academic Services, which means I get to work with Dr. Sharp and Dr. Kephart and all of the leaders that work in this building and all of the building administrators and teachers. So, and we focus on what it is students are learning and what we believe our goal should be for you when it comes to what you experience when you go through school in Lee Summit.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Murdock, and I'm one of the seven Board Members.
Hi, it's great to see each of you here tonight. And my name is Kim Fritchie, and I am also one of the Board Members.
Good evening. I'm Bob White. I'm also a Board Member.
Phyllis Bologna, Board President. Oh, Dr. Carpenter.
Well, Dennis Carpenter. And the other piece that I would add, I'd be remiss if I didn't speak about our high school students who are involved in registration this evening, and also Pleasant Lee Middle School due to infamous snow days, had to reschedule a musical performance. So that's another reason we're missing some kids. And no more snow days.
I'm Jackie Clark. And I'm Board Vice President, and I wish I had snow days in my job. I don't. And I want you to know that I went to Lee Summit High School, and I'm the first person in two generations of family members who have graduated from our schools. So welcome tonight to everybody.
Hi, I'm Dennis Smith. I'm also one of the seven Board Members. And I had this young lady when I was a teacher back in 19, early, shh, in the 70s, in the 70s sometime as a student.
Maybe before me.
Yeah, before you.
Hello, welcome, everyone. I'm Julie Doan, and I am one of the Board Members, and this is my fourth year of being on the Board. So welcome to everyone.
Hi, I'm Linda Ismer, and I serve as the Assistant to the Superintendent, and I'm Secretary to the Board.
Good evening. I'm Emily Miller. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Operational Services.
Good evening. I'm Wesley Metz, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer and Treasurer to the Board of Education.
I'm Joe Hatley. I'm the Attorney for the Board of Education. My work is never dull.
Very good. And I do want to piggyback a little bit on what Jackie said, Vice President Clark said. We, there's quite a few of us here that are graduates of Lee Summit High School. Kim, myself, Jackie, Dennis, Julie. So it's really cool to have gone through this system. You can say we're a product of the R7 school district, and now we have the opportunity to serve our community, and it is an honor. So at this time, we're gonna move in here to... Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. White.
A real quick comment, then there are also two of us up here who, although one of us didn't graduate from Lee Summit, had most of the rest of these people as students. Except for Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you. Alright, now, we're gonna get into our presentations and recognitions, and I've got a really exciting group here I'm ready to introduce. But first, I want to introduce to you Mrs. Amy Crinkie. She is here. She's going to lead a select choir group composed of students from Lee Summit High School, Sounds of Summit, Lee Summit North High School, Crimson Camarada, and Lee Summit West School, Unavoche. Just to put in a great big shout-out for Mrs. Crinkie, she was our Teacher of the Year in Lee Summit, I believe, two years ago or three. Excellent. And she is amazing. When I, when I saw today that they were going to be singing, and I was so excited. So she's just the best, and I will tell you, I went through the music programs here and have made a life of music, and I know the others as well. So with that said, I know you want to get to a performance. We get a little chatty here. I'll say, I do probably. So, Mrs. Crinkie, it is a delight to have you with us. Please share with us what you have here tonight.
First of all, it is a very rare opportunity for the students of the three different high schools to come together and perform together. That does not happen as often at the show. So tonight, we're gonna be performing something called Flight Song. This is a piece that is very near and dear to these kids' hearts. They love this piece. Many of them loved it in sophomore year. Some of them sang it at District Choir last year or All-State Choir, but the text is especially poignant for school board appreciation. So this is Flight Song, and this is our gift to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That just was, gave me chills. I'm so proud to be... Oh, okay.
So, board members, that was an offering for you all as it relates to Board Member Appreciation Week, and we hope you enjoyed our young people in that regard. And there are also some goodies for you behind the dais. So thanks for what you do in terms of board appreciation week. Thank you a bunch.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carpenter. We appreciate it. While they're passing these out, I spied a couple of people in the audience that I really want to have them stand up. They were people that were my teachers when I was in school, and they're really, really special and still stay involved to this day. Would Judy Green please stand up? And would Manny Maggady please stand up? Please give them a round of applause. Thank you for being with us this evening. We appreciate it. We also have lots of others as well, but I really wanted to say, thanks for being here tonight. You take me back to my childhood when I look at you. I'm like, I feel like a kid. All right, next is item 4.02, and folks, I really, we've got a great board up here that works tirelessly for you. So, let's get them involved here. I'm gonna turn, let's see, I'm gonna turn this over to the School Spotlight right now, and this is Cedar Creek Elementary. This is Principal Jen Opie and Assistant Principal Melissa Hunter, along with a few Cedar Creek students. We'll be sharing the school's journey on developing a growth mindset. So come on up. It's School Spotlight, Cedar Creek Elementary. Come on down.
Good evening. Now I just messed it up after I just got started. Hang on. All right, well, that'll work. That'll work. All right. My name is Jen Opie. I'm the proud principal at Cedar Creek Elementary. I've been there for the last 12 years, and it has been my distinct pleasure to be able to call myself principal at that school. I feel blessed each and every day to walk through those front doors. And my Assistant Principal is here, Melissa Hunter, and we've worked together, I think, now six years as teammates, partners in crime, whatever that might be. But anyway, I'm gonna dig right into our presentation tonight. We are very proud of the fact that kindness rules at Cedar Creek Elementary. And the first picture I'm going to show you are, these are the folks that make it happen. This is our teaching staff, and if you look at their shirts, it says K4C, and that's Kindness for Cory. Our new counselor, Tricia Kaufman, has really been instrumental in getting our kindness initiative off and running. And these shirts were in honor of her husband who had passed away from pancreatic cancer, and we all came together as a school and a community to support her. And so, it's just been an amazing experience getting to work and learn with her on that. We have been working on three different areas underneath the umbrella of growth mindset. Obviously, our focus on, is on kindness. We've been working a lot on grit and resilience, and also looking into and working on effort and putting forth our personal best each and every day. Like I said before, kindness matters at Cedar Creek. We talk about, and Mrs. Kaufman incorporates into a lot of her lessons about exercising your kindness muscle. And the more we exercise that muscle, the more our kindness and sincerity grows. So she weaves that into all of her lessons and encourages kindness, random acts of kindness throughout our entire school day. We like to recognize all of those random acts of kindness. Students can earn kindness recognition by noticing random acts of kindness throughout the school day. Students are recognized by staff, their peers. It can go, as a whole classroom can win a kindness award. You can win kindness awards individually. And then we like to celebrate these kiddos on our Facebook Counseling page, and we email those out to parents and our community. Also, we have kindness on display. One of the things we like to do to celebrate, again, kindness, is we had a bingo board where kids could go up and sign their name next to a kind gesture that you have done. And you could sign your name as many times and as many places as you want. We have kindness ninjas, and those are some fifth grade students that go out on Wednesdays, and they leave just notes, kind notes everywhere. And so kids can find them in the drinking fountains. I always get kindness notes on my door. They're just everywhere. And I actually have a kindness ninja. He's not up here right now, but he's back there. Nolan, there's one of my ninjas back there. So, all right. And I have a couple of fourth grade young men that are going to share with you. I have Liam Nelson, you can give him a wave. And I have Parker White, who is, are going to talk to you a little bit about why kindness is cool.
What Kindness Is Like at Cedar Creek by Liam Nelson. Have you ever wondered how much kindness spreads around CCE? First, I like to share the quality of kindness. At our school, kindness feels like a fresh wave of people saying, hey, come over here and play with me, or what you doing? Need help? Kindness at our school feels nice and welcoming. Second of all, whenever there's a new person, people can't wait to show them around. It's like going to a magical land where a unicorn greets you and gives you candy. Feels so good, you never want to come home. Last, the people at my school are very helpful. Everyone at CCE are some of, are some of the most helpful people in the world. All the kids and my teacher in my class aid me when I'm in desperate need of help. I assist others and others support me. I consider it a win-win. Overall, CCE is a great school with great students and staff. I'm glad to be here with all these kind people.
Very nice.
Kindness at Cedar Creek by Parker White. Even though kindness is everywhere, our school has the most kindness. Let me give you some examples. First of all, what does it mean to be kind? Kindness can be a lot of things. It can be as simple as helping someone get up if they fall or mowing your neighbor's yard. Next, why should we be kind? If nobody was kind, everybody would be lonely and the whole world would be a dump. If you do something kind, it spreads. When you do something kind to someone, they will probably do something kind to someone else, and so on. Finally, at our school, finally, our school has the best acts of kindness. Let me give you some examples. At Illinois recess, when we were playing board games, when someone wants to play with someone else, nobody says no. Or in class, when we have partners, if someone wants to be someone's partner, no one says no. As you can see, kindness is important in the world, so you should be kind.
Thank you, guys. All right, one of the next areas that we're gonna talk about is our grit and resilience. We've started looking into getting that intrinsic motivation to do your best. So, things that we are, the teachers have been incorporating into their lessons, problem-solving skills, goal-setting, and bouncing back, being able to tackle things and be able to come back from that. Some displays of grit and resilience that you'll find around Cedar Creek. It's very common to see these anchor charts that talk about productive struggle and getting kids like, what does it look like to struggle and work hard and have that stick-to-itiveness that we'd like to see, and of course, in our students, and we need that as adults. We highlight here the grit and resilience on Black History Month. We look at some of our black leaders and think about, talk about grit and resilience. Great stories that go along with that that incorporate right into our work with grit and resilience. Now, the next part of this piece is believing in the power of yet, and thinking about grit and resilience, trying your personal best each and every day. I have some kindergarten students that are going to share with you about the power of yet, and they are Avery Freund, Colton Tepin, and Evelyn Baker.
Giraffes Can't Dance by Avery Freund. I can do soccer. I can learn. I can't tie my shoes yet.
Giraffes Can't Dance by Evelyn Baker. I can do a backflip. I can go underwater. I can't do a cartwheel yet.
Giraffes Can't Dance by Evelyn Baker. I can do a backflip. I can go underwater. I can't do a cartwheel yet.
All right, thank you kindergarten friends. And the last part is just talking about Cedar Creek kids give their best effort each day. I won't read all of this PowerPoint slide, but basically, we, as a staff, we started looking in on, into the research on teaching effort led by Carol Dweck and Robert Marzano, and just thinking about, again, that intrinsic motivation to do your personal best each and every day. And again, artifacts that you would find around Cedar Creek. They might be hanging in classrooms, they might be in student hands, and their effort rubrics, just, did you do your best? And getting kids to self-reflect on their work on a given assignment. So today, I have some third grade kids that are going to talk to you a little bit about why it is important to do your personal best each day. And they are Jonah Park, Aiden Reed, and Charlotte Skelsey.
My teacher helps me show my best effort by working with me and pushing me farther. I know I'm showing my best effort when I keep working on something I don't get at first. My teacher sits down with me and shows me how to work it out, and she talks, she asks me a question I might not ask myself. If I still don't understand, she takes me, she talks to me again and how I might look at it differently. She never gives up to me. I feel confident when I know I'm giving my best effort.
I show my best effort with confidence. Even if the subject is hard or easy, I still show my best effort because I know I have the best teachers to guide me through my learning experience here at Cedar Creek.
My teacher helps me show my best effort by helping me understand something that I'm confused by while reading or solving a problem. I know I'm showing my best effort when I'm working hard and paying close attention to what my teacher is saying to me and to other students. For instance, if someone is confused about something I also don't understand, and she gives an answer, I would listen to how she answered them and apply it to my own questions. I feel like I can solve any problem when I know I'm giving my best effort.
Fantastic. Finished with flourish. All right, thank you so much for listening to our presentation tonight. Feel free to come visit Cedar Creek anytime. We're very proud of our home. Thank you.
Bye, Avery. Bye. Thank you so much. Vice President Clark would like to say something real quickly, if you don't mind.
You guys have touched my heart tonight, talking about Cory. And I had the pleasure of knowing him for about half of his life, and his mom and I are still very good friends. And Tricia is just a blessing for our district and their beautiful daughter. And I just really appreciate you guys' effort and what you do for kindness. That's so wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. If you are a parent of one of those precious children, would you please stand up? Very good. Thank you so much. That was great, really was. All right, we're gonna move on now. It is now time to get my fellow board members involved. I don't like to be the only voice that's up here tonight, so I'm gonna turn to Board Member Fritchy, right here. She's going to talk about item 4.03.
It is really an honor for me to introduce this next group because I happen to have somebody very special at Summit Lakes Middle School. And most people, I introduce myself as Kim Fritchy, but to most of you guys, I'd be known as Mrs. Dawn's mom. Those of you at Lee Summit High School who had her at PLMS too. So, anyway, it is my, very much my pleasure, pleasure to introduce Summit Lakes Middle School, who is proud to have the opportunity to share just a few of the wonderful aspects of their school. According to our write-up here, student artwork is on display in the art department, coordinated by their three teachers, Missy Michaelson Guard, Brian Freeborn, and Heidi Hicks. And lastly, they have a short presentation highlighting the four areas that reflect their work at Summit Lakes Middle School, and that is learners, readers, caring partners, and involved. Take it away.
All right. I am live. All right, thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to take a little time this evening. We are excited to share, as you mentioned, some key themes that our staff came up with as we were sitting down trying to put together this presentation. And so, over the next 30 minutes, we hope to do just that. I'm just kidding. It's not gonna be 30 minutes. I wouldn't do that to you. Everybody, it's okay.
That's all right. We would've stuck around, trust me. We would've stayed.
But as you mentioned, we do have some artwork on display, and so our fine art department has been working hard to showcase some of the many artistic talents of our students at Summit Lakes. Mrs. Guard, Mr. Freeborn, and Mrs. Hicks have done that, so if you have a chance at some point this evening, please check that out. I also want to give another shout out to Morgan Cross and a wonderful job that she did this evening. Thank you, Morgan. So there is a lot going on, things out and about in the community. Tomorrow night, I want to highlight one of those activities. We have Summit Lakes Music Night at the Mavericks hockey game. So on display tomorrow evening will be our Summit Lakes Singers, our jazz band, and our orchestra, as well as the ukulele club, which performed for you last year. So they will be performing during various breaks throughout the game, as well as in the concourse areas. And we have, at this time, over 500 tickets sold for the Summit Lakes section tomorrow evening alone. So, we're excited for a busy evening tomorrow night. So one of the things that we're gonna do here is, a couple of these students have already been introduced to you. I'm gonna hand the microphone over to them and let them introduce themselves again. And then, these students voice as you will hear throughout the presentation. So they served as... So, they served as the narrators for our presentation. But I do want to have them introduce themselves. And I also wanted to introduce, in the back of the room, I have Dr. Whitney Moorhead and Kirk Hippel, who are our two fabulous assistant principals. And they begged me tonight for the microphone, and I told them we just weren't going to have enough time. But, so I certainly appreciate everything that they do to support our students, our staff, and to keep Summit Lakes running smooth. So, at this time, I'm going to hand the microphone over to our students.
Hi, everyone. My name is Robert Damrin. I am a seventh grader at SLMS.
I'm Morgan Cross, and I'm an eighth grader at Summit Lakes Middle School.
I'm Amara Stevenson, and I'm a seventh grader at Summit Lakes.
My name is Isaac Greer, and I'm an eighth grader at Summit Lakes.
And with that, if you would roll the video.
At Summit Lakes, students and staff embrace literacy. Each teacher has their own classroom library, and the Library and Media Center holds over fifteen thousand books. Recently, our librarian conducted a diversity audit to ensure that we have a wide variety of books available to us. Each Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, we start our day with Flight, our sustained silent reading. As homeroom groups, we are challenged to read at fifty thousand pages. Last year, students recorded reading at thirteen thousand seven hundred sixty-three books, which adds up to almost four point one million pages. We are given time to read for pleasure, but reading is also something we do for classroom assignments. We learn to be critical readers, grow our vocabulary, and enhance our research skills. Our teachers also model good reading habits and even post "I'm Reading" signs. Penny Kittle-inspired reading groups are sponsored by the principals, librarian, counselors, SRO, PE teachers, building manager, and support staff. Literacy celebrations include summer and winter reading challenges, Book of the Month promotions, author visits, book-to-movie features, and the Missouri Schumann's Reader Award. At Summit Lakes, we are readers.
At Summit Lakes, students and adults learn with and from each other. Physical spaces such as the Collab Lab allow us to work in a unique, fun setting as we learn and collaborate together. Instructional methods, including the workshop model, allow us to confer with our teachers one-on-one and have enhanced classroom processes relative to student and teacher interactions and methodology. Hands-on inquiry-based learning causes students to go deeper with their learning through application and real-world experiences. Adding three hundred sixty math to our math classrooms promotes student movement while problem-solving and gives our teachers the opportunity to monitor and provide immediate feedback. In addition, our amazing librarian, Mrs. Brown, hosts monthly Food Fridays where teachers are treated to lunch as they learn about new applications in education. Students at SLMS have a voice. Recently, the Student Advisory Group was working on identifying problem areas within the building and brainstorming solutions. One such solution was to implement a roundabout in an effort to resolve congestion in one of Summit Lakes' busiest hallways. At Summit Lakes, we are learners.
At Summit Lakes, a positive school climate is a priority because learning in a safe, engaged, and responsive environment sets the foundation for positive academic, social, and emotional development. The I Belong program was launched to demonstrate the many different ways we can be involved and help make our time at Summit Lakes meaningful and impactful. I Belong was initiated at Summit Lakes during the 2017-2018 school year. The goal for the initiative is for each student to be engaged in an activity at school outside of a classroom setting. Last year, we had one thousand one hundred and seventeen students and currently have a ninety-two point one percent, one thousand and nine students accounted for in the I Belong initiative. At Summit Lakes, we are proud to be involved.
At Summit Lakes, students and staff work together to support each other and our community. Our students and staff raise money and help support community organizations such as Special Olympics, harvesters, and local food pantries. Our students decorate display windows at the local price chopper, and we showcase our musical skills with our business partners and patrons. The middle school team approach gives us a home base and creates a smaller community within a larger school. We bond and grow together through homeroom and team-building activities. Acceptance and compassion are reinforced through diversity and character activities that are a staple of our team beliefs. Eighth-grade students write letters to themselves as seniors. The former Falcons are welcomed back before graduation to celebrate their successes, reminisce with teachers, and read their letters. We have a great turnout, and it's a wonderful way for our family to reunite. Once a Falcon, always a Falcon. At Summit Lakes, we are family.
We are engineers. We are athletes. We are artists. We are performers. We are Falcons.
All right. I want to give a special thanks to Brian Campbell, former Lee Summit Teacher of the Year, and our Broadcasting and Theater Teacher, who helped coordinate that video along with Natalia Arons, a former Falcon, for helping to put that together, which has been a bit of a challenge with some of the snow days that we've had. But I appreciate their hard work. And thank you again for the opportunity for us to showcase some of the fun and the hard work that we do. Our teachers truly enjoy and love working with these wonderful students and partnering with them. And I hope you heard that clearly in the, in the four themes that we selected this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you are a parent of one of these children, or if you are a staff member of Summit Lakes Middle School, would you stand, please? Yay. Excellent, thank you so much. All right, moving on to item 4.04. I'm going to turn this over to Vice President Clark, who will do this presentation.
Good evening. Students from the Lee Summit North Marketing DECA Program created a consulting group in which they partner with local businesses to create a mutually beneficial partnership between their DECA chapter and small businesses. They help with business plans, marketing, demographics, event planning, and social media optimization. Students Nathaniel Yates, Peyton Anderson, and Lane Overton are here tonight to present information related to this program. Thanks for joining us, gentlemen.
All right, so, like she already introduced us, I'm Lane Overton. I'm a, I'm a senior at Lee Summit North.
I'm Peyton Anderson, I'm a junior at Lee Summit North.
I'm Nathaniel Yates, I'm a ju, I'm also a junior at Lee Summit North.
Got it, all right. So, all right, so what we do, so what we've been doing for the past year is we have worked, we have partnered with local businesses in order to increase like their sales and marketing programs like Peyton will talk about. And this has really not only helped the businesses, but also helped us get a real hands-on view of what it will look like working with businesses in the future. So, we've worked with Ask Kathy, Paradise Park, Crimson Cafe, Next Gen Wealth, and the Rotary Club. Okay, so what we do, we basically form into small groups in our marketing classes, in groups of maybe five or six, and we pair up with local businesses. And so, we go through the different things of marketing, what we need to work with them. And they give us a prob, the problems that they're having with their company, and we analyze the problems and try to find solutions for them. And so, for example, for Paradise Park, they were looking for new events to draw in a younger audience, since, or, an older, like teenage audience. Because, you know, they, most of their people are going in there, elementary school kids, they wanted to find something for teenagers. So, a group that got together for us, that Lane was actually a part of, was, they created a date night activity for Paradise Park, where they could have like reduced prices on food in bundling packages with games. And another example is for social media optimization. We partnered, I was in a group that partnered with Next Gen Wealth, and they really wanted to get better at social media and getting their name out to people where they normally wouldn't. So, I, along with a couple others, worked on bettering their social media and getting their name on more platforms in that sense. And so, for demographics, we are a younger demographic, and we help them with how younger people are thinking and give them a new, fresh ideas for their company. All right, so pretty much what Peyton already said. What we provide is, we provide a viewpoint for these businesses, a way to, to interact with the younger generation, high schoolers, teenagers, things like that. So, the best way to do that, we figured out, was primarily through social media. That's a big part of today's society. Almost all teenagers in high schools have some sort of social media platform. So, we figured that would be the best way to connect and interact with them. This project gave us real-world, real-world interactions, what it'll be like working with a business, and how it will prepare us for the future. So, we got to put what we learned in the classroom actually to the test and see how good it works and what we can improve on.
Have to put this on one bit. So, one of our largest partnerships has been with the Rotary Club of Lee Summit. And every year, Rotary has this big community project that they wanted fresh ideas on. And so, as you see on the presentation, we came up with a fountain idea. This fountain idea is in Lee McEgan Park, which is a very popular destination nowadays with the brand-new park, they have the skate park, ooh, my God. They have the skate park right there and the brand-new ice rink. So, this fountain would be a great idea to get people to know what Rotary is. Because, so, we all three worked with Rotary, and we didn't know what Rotary was. And so, that was kind of hard, kind of coming up with a promotional plan because we don't know what they do. So, we sat in a meeting, we went to a Rotary Club meeting at Unity Village. We learned, we learned a lot about them. And so, we came up with this great idea to get Rotary out in the community. We also revamped their brochure, and our next project with Rotary Club is to revamp their social media and their Instagram feeds and Twitter. So, from the businesses that we've worked with already, we've gotten great reviews. Next Gen Wealth said I would highly suggest other businesses who get the opportunity to give it serious consideration. Paradise Park also said great things about our services. And Ask Kathy Marketing Group interviewed a lot of people for the marketing positions, and they said our ideas rivaled any ideas that they heard. And so, now we have a video of testimonials from business owners that we worked with.
We were excited about the opportunity to work with the, the group just because we felt it would be important to get some information from that age group. That, that, being able to also find out a little bit more about what's interesting to high school ages and, and being able to connect with them better. So, we really wanted to find out if, you know, from a, a very well-rounded background in there, finding out what kinds of things that help us communicate with them. And most specifically, you know, that, just that whole connection of what's interesting, how can we help, and what kind of things could we be doing in order to help us communicate better?
Well, honestly, Laura Maxwell, who works with the school district, introduced the concept to us, and I thought it'd be a great opportunity to leverage some different minds and see what kind of thoughts you had that might help us out in terms of helping build our Rotary Club in Lee Summit.
What were your expectations for the group?
Just to get some fresh ideas from, from, you know, a different generation. You know, when you came to Rotary, you were honest with me that you'd never heard of it before, and that was part of the project, was just to show you guys something, show you a different perspective on life out there and get some fresh ideas.
All in all, I thought it was a really cool experience to, to get some input from high schoolers in how I can better line out my website, work with social media, to better apply to folks who are a little bit younger. So, it was a great experience, and I just wanted to share it with you all. Thanks a lot.
So, as you heard, we had some pretty good reviews from the companies that we've worked with so far. But what our goals are for the future are that we want to expand our program, and we want to get more financial sponsors so that we can, so, in order to do so, in order to us, in order for us to go bigger, to more businesses, and be able to work with more local businesses. And so, we'd like to thank the board for having us tonight to present our ideas. We'd like to thank everybody here for also listening to us. And let us know if you have any questions.
Fellow board members, are there any questions or comments anyone would like to make? Yes, Mr. Murdock?
I have one question for you. How many people are in your group?
Total, well, in our class, we, we have maybe twenty people. But then, in the other marketing classes, we have more than, probably about sixty people.
Wow, okay, thanks.
Yes, very good. Any other comments? All right, thank you so much. Uh-huh.
I just want to make a shout-out to Mr. Zachary Johnson. He's their teacher.
And Toni, I know who you are, but they might not. Go ahead and tell us who you are, tell us what you do. Let's get you in on the act here.
Well, so, good evening. I'm Toni Bowman-Meek, and I'm the Career Curriculum Specialist for the Lee Summit School District. So, you guys did a great job. And this is, February is Career and Technical Education Month. So, we're here to celebrate that and all the wonderful things that you guys do. So, awesome.
Very good, thank you Toni and group, thank you. It was wonderful to have you with us. All right, moving into our next area, we're going to talk about 4.05. This is Career and Technical Education Month, moving forward into. Mr. Bob White is going to share this with us.
During February, our school district recognizes and celebrates the valuable work of our career and technical educators, CTE, as a part of National Career and Technical Education Month. Thanks to these teachers, our students are better prepared for their future. Students, employees, and families appreciate the efforts of career and technical educators and the positive influence they have on our young people. Zachary Johnson, marketing teacher and DECA advisor for Lee Summit North High School is here on behalf of all career and technical education teachers.
All right, very good, thank you Zachary. All righty, moving on next to item 4.06, this is PTA Founder's Day. I believe that Mr. Murdock will be reading this presentation.
Thank you, President Bologna. Each February, Lee Summit R7 celebrates PTA Founder's Day and recognizes the significant contributions of our PTA volunteers. Thanks to our active PTA members, Lee Summit schools are better able to serve our almost eighteen thousand students. For close to one hundred and twenty years, PTA members throughout our nation have donated their time and talents to improve the life of each child, while also enhancing communities. In addition to the individual volunteer efforts within our schools, PTA members provide resources for families and are strong advocates for public schools. Tonight, we will be honoring our PTA members in recognition of the difference these volunteers make within our schools. PTA corresponding secretary Patty Van Norman is here tonight representing the PTA volunteers throughout our district.
Thank you very much for all that PTA does in our community and in our district. Moving onto item 4.07, this is School Counseling Week. Mr. Dennis Smith will be reading this presentation.
During this special week, we honor and celebrate the accomplishments of our guidance counselors as part of the National Counselors Week, February 6th through the 10th. Staff, students, and families appreciate the impact our counselors have on ensuring that school is a safe and caring learning environment for our students. Counselor Kara Gruhala, Longview Farm Elementary, will be in attendance representing her counseling peers.
All righty, and our final presentation this evening will be read by Board Member Doan. Board Member Doan is also one of two that serves on the Citizens Advisory Committee, so I thought she was very befitting to do this next presentation.
Yes, it's very near and dear to my heart. The R7 Board of Education has designated February as Lee Summit R7 Citizens Advisory Committee, CAC, month in honor of this highly-involved team of volunteers established in nineteen fifty-two. Way before my time, okay? By longtime Superintendent Dr. Bernard Campbell. The CAC has continued to focus on its mission to facilitate communication, advise, and partner with the R7 Board of Education, superintendent, and community to ensure successful and innovative to ensure a successful and innovative school system that maximizes each student's potential. Tonight, we have invited CAC members to attend, and will be presenting, presenting all members in attendance with a certificate. CAC Chairperson is Kent Kirby, Kent here, and Assistant Chair is Elaine Blummel. I saw her.
Other CAC members, if you're present, come on up, come on up, come on up.
I know we have others here. I saw Mark Van Blaer come back there. Yes. There's Trish Freevert, yes.
How many do we have here? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Thank you so much for all of your time and the great work that you continue to do for our school district. Thank you. At this time, we reserve a moment for our public comments. Just to share a few things about that, the agenda for each regular meeting of the Board of Education includes a designated time, which is three minutes for comments from the public. The purpose of this is to permit members of the public to speak within three minutes on matters pertaining to the district. Citizens desiring to address the board during comments from public will advise the Superintendent or the President of the Board prior of the starting time of the meeting. This request is made in writing. I've got a form here. It was over on a podium, and I do have a list here. We are going to, while we do have quite a few who've signed up, we are going to go past that 20-minute time limit so that we can give everybody an opportunity to share their voice, which we all do believe is very important. Please, the time, three minutes. Comments retaining, pertaining to the district are welcome. And also, I have a gavel here, so I have not used it yet, so if you get out of line, I will smack it, okay? So, and I don't anticipate that to happen, but I did wish to remind everybody that. Board and everyone sitting at the dais, please give these people your undivided attention, as we do again appreciate the voice of our community. First up on the agenda, I'm going to invite Ms. Christine Bushyhead. She is a district parent, and she's going to speak to us tonight on the CSIP and Culture, and Culturally Responsive Schools Model. Christine, come on up, take the podium. Nice to see you this evening.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Amy Gates is our gatekeeper, timekeeper, and she's, you may have it.
Thank you very much. On July, on January 27th, January 17th, 2019, I addressed the board in an effort to convey information regarding the district's comprehensive improvement plan, the CSIP, and, which was approved over 20 months ago. That plan contained two specific goals related to closing the achievement gap, diversity training, and culture of inclusion. And that adoption directed those particular goals, as well as all the others, to be programmed and achieved. This coincided with the hiring of Dr. Carpenter, which also occurred in July of 2017. What a perfect combination. And now we're 21 months later, and there is no specific programming that can, that has, that can positively and directly impact student achievement gap and diversity that has been proposed yet to be implemented on a district-wide basis. We see a lot of things going on, on a school-by-school basis, but there isn't any programming that is directed towards achieving those goals. If I were a parent of a subgroup or a struggling student in a subgroup, I would be frustrated with that timeframe. Instead, the board is getting ready to prepare, to approve an equity plan that lends itself to three more years of planning. I guess the other board-approved plans that have the same desired outcome that are already in place just don't use the correct terminology. In fact, I discovered and didn't know that we already have a plan called the Culturally Responsive School Model that was announced proudly in our November 2016 R7 newsletter that talked about, the team has developed guidelines to ensure that all R7 schools are equitable and culturally responsive. The model was developed with facilitation assistance from Dr. Emmanuel Gumsey, President of the All-World Languages and Cultures. There in that plan, we have diversity facility teams supposedly at each school. Supposedly, we have a six-member diversity planning team. This has been in place since November of 2016. Why do we continue planning? Why can't we start actually programming and making things happen? It's just confusing to, to me. This, and it's also sad to think about the fact that we are going to spend another 36 months, 24 to 36 months, planning just so we can change the terminology and use some trendy vocabulary. Well, let's, let's talk about what's trendy. What's trendy, according to the New York Times, is that the digital gap between rich and poor kids is not what we expected. America's public schools are still promoting devices with screens, even offering digital-only preschools. The rich are banning screens from class altogether. We're finding Silicon Valley, their kids aren't on computers. They aren't, they are going back to textbooks. And they are wealthy enough that when their kids don't have something to do other than plug-in, they can pay for nannies. But we can't. I can't. So, while we sit around and plan and try to re-engineer plans we already have in place, we don't have specific programs being developed or presented to go into our classrooms and start getting going. Why aren't, why don't we have a program that says all of our kids that get to, have to be kindergarten-ready? And then why aren't we going out in the community, getting our community volunteers and businesses and organizations, organizing them to make that happen? That's programming. That's not sitting around and talking about it. That's making something happen. So, I would be frustrated if I was in a subgroup, because right now the city, this, this district has gone 20 months, plus, we're going to add a couple more years to it, planning on what we're going to do with equity. Let's do it. We have plans in the books. Let's implement right now our culturally responsive school model that we already have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Christine. I appreciate you being here tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to our second speaker this evening. It is Morgan White, district parent, to discuss the equity plan. Come on up, Morgan. Megan, I'm sorry, Megan White. My apologies, Megan. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a parent of children in two subgroups, actually. So, one who's no longer in the district, she's a recent graduate, and two that are currently still in. You know, successful equity plans exist in many districts. The one that's on the table tonight has immediate actionable items, so fortunately, it isn't a waiting game. And not only that, these items address immediate needs to mitigate current harms that the children in our district are facing. With your support this evening, a clear and loving message that every student deserves an education that prepares them for lifelong learning and financial success, that will enable them to have a better quality of life and contribute to the economic stability of our country, the ability to participate and represent a government, and act as leaders in our military regardless of their race, gender, ethnicity, language, disability, sexual orientation, and family background and income. Will be sent. So, please ask yourselves, do I have the complex understanding of bias and inequity that allows me to make sense of diversity-related dynamics in sophisticated ways? Most people don't. If we're going to effectively respond to these dynamics, we need to be able to clearly see them. Voting against inequity policy for our kids, which again, does have immediate actionable items, is turning a blind eye to the issue at hand. Most of us want what's best for our kids. I, I really don't doubt that. We have excellent teachers. This is an amazing community full of really good people. You know, I'm sure a lot of us and our educators and people on the board even have championed diversity initiatives, but let me be clear. Doing so without an understanding of bias and inequity can cause more harm than good. Without a deeper understanding, these attempts tend to avoid or whitewash serious equity issues. Once we're willing to see what we're conditioned not to see, we're on the path to equity. And it all begins with the humility to consider our culpability, and voting for this plan that's on the table tonight is a beginning. You know, amongst us this evening are those who wish to derail the conversation. They desire to continue to skirt around the issues and avoid any serious attempt at improving the educational experience for every child in this district. They'll say that there hasn't been enough opportunity for discussion. You know, they will become very defensive at the use of phrases like white privilege and white fragility without really understanding what these mean and why, you know, it's okay to even feel that way, but what's not okay is to let this discomfort that they might be feeling guide their decision to not support what is good and right. There's been ample opportunity for discussion and review, both of which are also built into this plan, ensuring transparency and ongoing collaboration. We need to start somewhere, and now is the time to show all of our students and families that, that they matter, and we're talking, we're taking their education and future success seriously. Kids are hurting every single day, and the waste of human potential in our district is enormous. For the continued good of everyone in our community, I implore each and every one of you to support this initiative. Creating a space to discuss and address these issues is difficult, but it's essential. A serious attempt at fixing what is broken here requires the courageous leadership that is expected from you, representatives of our community and of the kids who feel that they aren't heard, aren't considered, and are not cared about in our schools, and there are a lot of them. A vote against this plan would send a very clear message to them and to the community at large that their futures are not important enough for you to stand up for what is right. This is a time to ask yourself what's important, what really matters, and as uncomfortable as it may be, do the right thing. Thank you, and I'm sorry I went over my time.
Thank you very much, Megan. We appreciate your voice. All right, up next, I hope I say this right, is there Abane Memms? I hope. I'm so sorry if I did not pronounce it correct. Would you do me a favor? Please say your name correctly so I may...
I am. First, I'm going to address you the proper way. Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, distinguished staff, your students, parents, and your community. My name is Abane Memms. I am a past Board Member of 18 years, four years consecutive as the Board President. I tried to sneak into your, into your meeting, but there's some folks in here knew who it was under the hat. I'm also a former state representative, and now I serve as a alderman on city council. So, some things that I'm listening to tonight, I came to your meeting first to hear some things and to, and to, to address some things that I've been hearing, and I hope I don't go past my time, so I'll start speeding up on you, okay? But what brought me to your meeting is there's some things that I had been hearing in the media that kind of bothered me, and because of the individual, which is your Superintendent, I can say to you very proudly that I am one of those people that voted, that brought him here to Kansas City. So, I wanted you all to know, you have our diamond. He was in the rough with us, because it was rough in Hickman Mills, but he's a diamond now that you all have. So, what I'm saying to you all, there are a lot of programs that you all have in place that I am so proud. I was just choking when I listened to your children, your young people from the Link group. They got it. They hear what's going on. They know what's out there. They're, they know what's in their community, and trust me, it is very deeply to me hardened when we close our eyes and blind to what's happening and what's around us at the present time. It took a death of a little kid, and I, and I get choked up. But I watched Dr. Carpenter bring our community together, which we had lost trust, faith in every aspect we had. It brought the community together, the school district together. Let me tell you something. It brought the police department together, elected officials together, to come about and make the changes that need to be done. Was it easy? No, people. Was it hard? Yes, because people are afraid of, and scared of change. I looked at each one of you tonight, and I looked at your audience, and I'm looking at a diverse piece when I looked at those babies there. When we combined our high schools together, it was tough, and I was sitting there. But let me tell you what the kids said to me. I had my nice little speech ready to go, and they said to me. I said, "What do I say?" They said, "You know, it was a tough year, Ms. Abane. Just say it." I watched those babies. There's a picture I have with tears on their faces as they were walking across the stage in their colors of their school. So, I come to you to talk about this young man here. When I look at other superintendents across nationally that call for him for help and different things, because I was the one of those down in Ferguson that looked at some of the problems. So, I looked at the co-op, where he serves at the present time on there. I just wanted to share some things. I watched him close the gap. I watched him change our test scores that had been in trouble for years. But I want you to know, I stand here proudly for this young man to say, "You all have a jewel. If you allow him to do his job, and you all support him," because that's what Dr. Stansberry put in me, that what I'm supposed to support, those people and those leaders like these folks sitting here, to do a job and to educate our students. Ma'am, I had some more to say to you because you're asking me in three minutes to sum up some years, but I just want to say to you all, be open-minded, be careful how you make the decisions, how rash you are, because these are these children's lives. So, I thank you for allowing me to speak before you all tonight. Dr. Carpenter, I am so proud of you. Continue to do, because what I heard in this room tonight, my heart is filled, and I am proud to say to all of you all, you have a dynamite district. You all are fantastic, and don't ever let nobody tell you anything different. Keep up the good work and continue those programs. It takes planning to make the seed and the plant grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Thank you. Next up is Rachel Cole. She is a district parent. She's going to speak on Equity Plan.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Cole. I'm a parent to two children, my oldest being in kindergarten at Summit Point Elementary. I'm also a school counselor in another district, and I'm here tonight to ask for your support of the equity plan that's being presented. As a school counselor, I've seen how important it is for all of our students to know they have value and to know that they matter. And when they feel like they don't matter, that's when things start to go downhill, and I've seen the effects of it on our children. And I don't want to see the effects of that to be continued on our children here. At my previous district, I was at a district where equity was a focus of our entire district. And I had the privilege of going through training. The teachers were given tools, they were given resources, and I saw the positive change that happened as a result of that. Personally, I saw a change. Professionally, I saw a change in myself, but it wasn't even about the change in myself. It was because we saw the change in the staff, that it made it better for the students. Professional development shows the students what is important to us, and if we show them that equity is important, we're showing them that they matter. At my previous district, I saw a change in how teachers approached the students, in the interactions they had, in the way they approached discipline, in the way they approached how students were chosen for programs, in the way they looked at their programs to see, are students overrepresented? Are they underrepresented? And if so, what do we need to do to make changes to make sure that they're represented in a way that's appropriate and that's equitable? I saw so many good things come from the equity program at my previous district, and I believe that an equity program would be so beneficial to our students here. I saw the teachers make changes where they didn't even know they needed to make changes. And I've heard so many things about amazing teachers tonight. Honestly, I could spend my three minutes telling you about my child's kindergarten teacher. Her name's Ms. Shield. She's amazing. But I won't, I won't talk about her for three minutes, but I could. It's not providing them the support, it's not saying that they're less than or that they are lacking. Providing them the support is saying, "We believe in you. We know you can do hard things." It's something I teach my students at my school. It's something I teach my... It's something I teach my students at my school. It's something I teach my daughter. When she says, "This is hard," I say, "What do we say?" She says, "We can do hard things." And our district can do hard things, and it's too important not to do those hard things. Another question that I ask my students at school is, if you had no fear, what would you do? And there's been a lot of talk about the discomfort around this topic, about the fear, about the concerns. And I think a lot of that comes from not understanding the topic and having fear. But tonight, I strongly encourage you to say, "If I had no fear of making people uncomfortable, what would I do? If I had no fear of making people upset? If I had no fear of worrying what other people thought, what would I do?" And to me, the answer is to support the equity plan. Thank you for your time.
Very nice. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Ms. Sarah Myers. She is a parent. Is she here? All right, come on up, Sarah. She is a parent, and she's also going to speak with us this evening on the Equity Plan.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Myers, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am here to express my support for the proposed R7 Equity Plan. I applaud this plan's inclusion of professional staff development on equity, culturally competent curriculum and instruction, as well as recruitment and retention of a diverse staff that mirrors our student population. In the past, I never had to question my school district's commitment to the best interests of my children. Our three oldest kids are in the seventh, fifth, and second grade, and their educational experience has been wonderful. Our three oldest kids are white. Our youngest child, who will start kindergarten in the fall, is black. I now have to wonder, how will my black daughter's educational experience here in Lee's Summit differ from that of my white children? It's important for you all to know, however, that I am not here tonight in support of the Equity Plan simply because I want the best for my black daughter. I'm here because I want the best for all four of my children, and this Equity Plan serves them all well. My black and my white children will benefit from being taught by teachers of color, which, by the way, is an experience none of them have ever had. After thirty-three primary classroom teachers, and I stopped counting over seventy-five, if you include all the teachers, principals, counselors, that just my own kids have had. All of my children will benefit from culturally competent curriculum instruction. As examples, I want them all to learn about history in an accurate way that gives voice to non-white experiences and perspectives. And I want them all exposed to authors representing a variety of races and cultures. This plan is good for everyone. We are all aware of our district's racial performance gap, the disproportionately low numbers of students of color in gifted programs, and the disparity between disciplinary measures used for black and white students for the same infractions. I understand that some people choose to believe there is no systemic problem in our district and that the responsibility for the performance gap lies only with the families of the children in the underperforming subgroups. However, this way of thinking cannot lead to growth or change, and it does not come from an honest reflection into what systemic barriers and obstacles may indeed still exist in our district that are contributing to the racial disparities demonstrated in the data. Rather than deny the existence of these systemic barriers and obstacles simply because I have never faced them personally, I choose instead to listen to the lived experiences of those who have. Doing so has left me no doubt about the importance of and need for this focus on equity. This is a pivotal moment in our district and in our community. I encourage you to confirm your dedication to educational equity in Lee's Summit by voting in favor of this proposed Equity Plan. Your support will demonstrate your sincere and actionable commitment to the best interests of all four of my children and all of the children in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Ms. Amanda Coleman. Come on up, Amanda.
Good evening. I'm going to be super rude and look down the whole time while I read.
Okay.
My name is Amanda Coleman. I have three children in Lee's Summit that look a lot like me, in first grade, fourth grade, and seventh grade. Also, I'm an educator. I've dedicated nineteen years working in communities serving underprivileged and underrepresented youth. I want to acknowledge the bravery of the work that you all are doing. Dr. Carpenter and board members, having conversations, beginning conversations about inequity require great vulnerability because the outcome is uncertain and emotional exposure is at risk. Many of you know the researcher and sociologist Brené Brown, whose current work focuses on organizational leadership. In her book, Daring Leadership, she stated, "One barrier to brave leaders and courageous cultures is the opting out of conversations about diversity", citing the root as being fear of being wrong, saying something wrong, or looking wrong. The data clearly and unequivocally speaks to disparity in student performance, with the students receiving the greatest impact are those students in poverty and black students. There's also a great underrepresentation of students in color in our gifted programs and a great overrepresentation of our students of color in disciplinary decisions. These factors alone speak, although I believe unknowingly, to biased perceptions about students based on their race. When you remove poverty from the equation, the gap in achievement does diminish between black and white students, but it is not eliminated. It is clear to me that work needs to be done with faculty to deepen understanding of unconscious bias and conscious biases, to strengthen understanding of cultural differences for the purpose of relationship building for our students and families, to understand the effects of poverty and trauma that they have on our students' neurological development, and the instructional response needed from teachers as a result. Lee's Summit has been a growing district for thirty years. It's going to continue to grow. It is the place where people come because they want the best for their children, and it will continue to be a district that increases in diversity. I did see some hope in the data. When evaluating the achievement of students who have attended Lee's Summit schools for one to two years versus three or more schools, the achievement growth for students of color was twice that of the achievement growth of white students. This indicates that Lee's Summit teachers are doing something right. I would argue it's probably a symptom of the overall rigor and high expectations that this district has for its learners. And in my experience, a hundred percent of the time, students rise to the expectations we set for them. I wonder how much more our underrepresented students could achieve if their teachers received some professional development to best reach and teach them. This Equity Plan is good. It runs the risk of harm to no student, yet it has the power to begin a process of professional development and instructional response that will benefit every student. Not only is the adoption of this plan the ethical thing to do, it is the most responsible thing to do as educators. Twenty-five percent of the students enrolled in Lee's Summit schools are not white. Just as doctors sign an oath to provide their best and most ethical medical treatment to their patients, I believe teachers carry in their hearts a commitment to do their very best for their students. We have students who are not receiving the best that they deserve. Please vote to provide an opportunity for that change. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Amanda. All righty, next up, we will hear from Clifton Campbell. He's a parent, and he's going to speak on the Equity Plan.
First of all, Madam President,
Yes, sir.
Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. And I'd first like to start out by simply reading what's above your head. We prepare each student for success in life. And I'm certain that when you ran to become a board member, you pledged that that is what you were going to do, each student. So, I heard ninety-nine point three percent. That's good. That's actually great. Point three, that means that there is a gap. That means we want one hundred percent. Here's a comparison. So, the Kansas City chief, they almost went to the Super Bowl. They almost. That's kind of like ninety-nine percent, point three, right? And so, one of the things that they do, they go out, they have a plan, they recruit in areas that need improvement. And if it's that point three percent that needs to come up, that's what needs to happen. And so, it appears that your commitment says, number three, promoting continuous improvement through data-driven decision-making. It appears that that is exactly what the plan tends to do. And so, I applaud the staff. Thank you for your commitment to the data-driven information, implementation, start, move forward. The kids deserve it. I heard several board members say that they are former students. That means that you are educated in this district. That means that you've seen a change. That means that you now have a commitment to the students who are now there, who may not look like you, who may not talk like you, who may not be from Kansas City, who may not be from Lee's Summit. You have a commitment to move this plan forward. So, again, I applaud you, and I say, "Thank you for what you plan to do for our kids." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. All righty, next up, we will hear from Ms. Leah MacIntosh, and she is a parent, and she is also going to speak with us tonight on Equity Plan.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Leah.
I'm Leah MacIntosh, the parent of three children that attend Cedar Creek Elementary. It was wonderful to see Cedar Creek spotlighted tonight. I am also a full-time working mom and Equity Task Force leader for over two hundred families of suburban balance. Tonight, I'd simply like to ask one question to each board member. And if you're inclined to respond, please do. Ryan, do you believe in equity for all students?
Yeah, we're really not supposed to respond, honestly, but if you feel like you'd, I mean, no, no. Yeah, sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Kim, do you believe the achievement disparities that exist between white students and minority subgroups must be narrowed or eliminated? Bob, do you believe each student should be provided a personalized learning experience? Phyllis, do you believe the district should meet the unique needs of diverse learners? Jackie, do you believe we should attract and retain high-quality staff while increasing gender and ethnic diversity? Dennis, do you believe we should have a systemic diversity training plan for staff? Julie, do you believe that we should monitor staff, student, and parent perceptions of diversity, training, and create a culture of inclusion? I hope by virtue of the yes you're saying inside that you would vote yes for the Equity Plan that is presented later this evening. As a parent, I've had the opportunity to review the plan and talk with my other community members and get their feedback. And I believe this is the best plan I have seen in my twenty-one years here in Lee's Summit. So, I am excited as a parent to support the plan and partner with you as our school board and the administration. I want to lift up Dawn Smith and her team. They have done a fantastic job in leading this effort and including our community in its development and upcoming execution. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. All righty, next up, I believe I have Michael Shaw. Is he here? Yes, he is. I saw him earlier. He's going to come to the podium and speak also on the Equity Plan.
Good evening. How are you doing, Michael Shaw? Eighteen-year parent and resident of LSR School District and member CAC. I will first say, congratulations, Dr. Carpenter. Under your leadership, we have moved our test scores, our scores up to over ninety-nine percent. And I think it's been the first time maybe ever that we've gotten that high. Absolutely. So, something is working. Test scores are improving. And I also like to say that to continue that growth, that we certainly continue to, and I am in support of and in favor of, the Equity Plan as it is written. I was involved in that earlier plan when we talked about the 2016 agenda or the plan that was launched in 2016. I was actually involved with that under the CAC group. It focused mostly on diversity. And what we've learned today, or what I've learned over the time, is that it's more than, equity is more than diversity. And so, I think that although the plan was good, there's more that needed to be done. And so, I do believe that this Equity Plan that you have for you this evening hits the mark. And I hope that you approve it for my son. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, next up, I have next Kristen Dunlap. She is a parent and a citizen, and she is also going to be speaking on the Equity Plan.
Madam President,
Yes.
and board, former teacher. I feel like the mic has been dropped so many times, and now you have me. So, forgive me. I obviously am a graduate of Lee's Summit. I've been in education for twenty-five years myself and continue as I finish my next level of education. I am a parent of two boys that look like me and two girls that don't. And my two girls, I would be remiss if I didn't say I had a little pit in my stomach when I started kindergarten in first grade this year. And I had no reason to think that they wouldn't have positive experiences, but being of color, it caught me off guard. It made me think. And so, I come to you with being the parent, being in education, being a citizen, and then also being a person that, kind of like in reading Michelle Obama's book, Becoming. I was on the district diversity team when I was on staff here. It started back in 2002, I think, about the time I was on it, and tied up in 2015. And it felt like the catalyst being, it was Kansas City, Missouri's accreditation issues and the threat of urban students being bused to Lee's Summit. And the leadership at that time wanted to be proactive. And I felt like we did a nice job of raising awareness. But in retrospect, it wasn't, it did not sustain itself. It was more ceremonial, and it was not the intent. But now, looking, it is so much of a deeper need to be addressed and equity needing to be there. The ASR of 2016 did bring up a lot of findings. I have read that in my research of the district. And one of the unexpected findings was, that kind of caught many people off guard, was the inequity that was present in the course offerings for all students and things like that. So, I would just, I was glad to see the district did that assessment, the ASR, because I felt like Lee's Summit was becoming a little stagnant. And I think that gave us a little push, and I think it was really good to see. The one thing I want to address real quick, so I just want to bring that up, that the ARSR, going back to what people have said about back in 2016, it was addressed, but wasn't really addressed. Were we able to put our teeth into it and carry it forward and do something with it? The heart was there, but we need to push it forward. The model of the plan right now is kind of a top-down model in terms of training those in the form of making decisions for all to be trained and become even more knowledgeable than you already are of the needs for equity. And although being a teacher at heart, the teachers are the foot soldiers, definitely. But so many times in the classroom, what we really want to focus on the needs of those kids gets put aside for test scores. Get this curriculum done and do this. And it's not hard. It's just, I want it to be known that teachers' voices are important, but I think as the board goes, so goes the district. And I think if you set the example and you make this a priority, then it will trickle down, and it'll be a priority for everyone, and then the teachers can really take hold of it and make it flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. All right, next up, we have Eric Lowe. Eric is a parent, and he is going to speak with us on the Equity Plan.
Good evening, board, Dr. Carpenter, and administrators. I moved into this district a couple of years ago and followed the district online, watching meetings until last fall, when I felt like I really had to make my presence known. And I'm sure you know, you've seen me here several times since then. This district has immediate needs that this board appears to struggle with addressing. These immediate needs and attempts by the administration to set ongoing targets and action items to keep a plan of equity moving forward in this district continue to be stifled, and it's very disturbing to me. When I came and I spoke with you all last fall, I shared with you that I had been a board member. I shared with you what it means to be a board member and who your obligations are to, and that is to all the students of this district. I attended board meetings where Dr. Carpenter and the administrative team had put forward a plan to bring in someone to do equity training, Dr. Glenn Singleton, and there was a ruckus and an uproar, and this board walked away from it. and an uproar, and this board walked away from it. But the board walked away from it, saying, "We're not abandoning this. We want you to do more." So I came, and I sat through more meetings where Dr. Carpenter and his administration went to St. Louis, and they met with the Parkway School District, and they found out what that district was doing in its equity plan, and tried to bring back those measures and targets to ensure that that same level of achievement could be achieved here in Lee's Summit School District. I'm concerned tonight, and I'm hopeful that this board will pass this Equity Plan. I was very fortunate and appreciative of the opportunity to sit and take part in its development and hear what the plan was. I will tell you, as Dr. Carpenter and other people know who sat in that meeting with me, I have very aggressive expectations and targets for what should happen. Do I think that plan could be more than it is? Absolutely. But I think that plan is the best thing that I've ever seen proposed by anyone in this district to address the inequities that exist here and that appear to be persistent. DESI has collected subgroup data on students since at least 2000. In the first meeting I came to, I spoke with a board member who told me that this was the first that they were ever hearing about how poorly subgroup students were performing and how poorly the district had been doing as far as they were concerned. I didn't know at that time that that board member had served as an educator and administrator in this district for decades and was horrified to hear that that was the first time they were understanding that. And what that tells me is there's some real questions about what's going on at an administrative level as far as addressing and being competent about all the students you serve. I hope this board approves the Equity Plan tonight, because it affects not some children, it affects all children, and it will enhance all of their experiences, both in this district and in life in the future.
All righty, we are next going to hear from Mr. Tosser. It is your turn. Come on up, and he is a parent, also a former educator in our district. He's going to talk to us about something different for a moment, and it's called math.
It's going to come about.
So here we go.
My daughter's 40 years old, so I'm here because I believe in the district, and I believe, I also believe in equity. Madam President, in front of you, board members and administrators, you have a breakout of the test scores, which has a lot to do with equity. You can see the Blue Springs, the Lee's Summit, and the state's test scores for 2018. You can see that Blue Springs has the best test scores of about 5% or 6% better than us in the third, fourth, and fifth grade level. And you can see that our test scores are about, you can see I've written them out there, about 4%, 2%, 1.7%, and 3.1% above the state, which, to me, as a former math teacher, I cringe. When you look at that, I'm going to give us a pretty good, this is the first year, so I'm going to give us a pass on it. But when you look overall and you take apart the test scores, there's a lot of need in there, and I don't see a plan of action how to get to it. Looking there, there are three schools, and I'm not going to name them. We have three elementary schools. When you look at below a basic skill level, one school has 59.4% of their students below in basic on skill level. That means they don't have the skills to be passed. They should all be retained. Another school has 60% that should all be retained. Another school has 65% that should all be retained. Okay? I met with Dr. Carpenter and Dr. Kephart back in December. I had come to the board meeting and pleaded three times to be a part of the math solution, but I got a call. At that meeting, I proposed a five- or six-step solution to start January the 1st. Those steps are in front of you. During that meeting, I was told that everything that I talked about was right on. I knew exactly what I was talking about. If you see GT by it, that means grade 10. Okay, everything, I'm not going to go over it. You can read it. Okay, at the end of that meeting, and there's a little caveat down there at the bottom, those 43% of our students in Lee's Summit that are basic and below are the same 43% that score 19 and below on the ACT test, which means basically they're not going to do well in college. It's a great correlation. I don't know who's tracking numbers in the district, but we're not tracking all the numbers. Okay? So I'll wrap this up really quick, because I'm going to take a minute. Can I take a minute of your time since you?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All the numbers. I made a proposal, what I thought could help every underachieving student in Lee's Summit starting January 1, if they would take my plan. I don't know, Dr. Kephart, did you ever look at my plan? You didn't write down one single note.
Okay. All right. Mr. Tosser.
I'm stopped. Time out. Okay.
Okay.
I won't say another word.
Okay, so I'm going to give you about 10 seconds to wrap up.
I asked, I asked the district, Dr. Carpenter, and Dr. Kephart to allow $300,000 to work with these schools starting January the 1st.
I'm going to go ahead and stop, Mr. Tosser, okay? Thank you for being here with us tonight. We appreciate your passion, but we are over time.
I asked to work with one school, and I was told no.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Tosser, for being here. Okay, we are going to move right on to Kristi Engelman. She's a parent, a citizen, and she's going to talk to us about equity, I believe. Come on up.
My name is Kristi Engelman, and I am a community member here in Lee's Summit, as well as the mom of a student currently attending Lee's Summit Elementary and another that will be starting kindergarten there next year. Both of my children fall into multiple subgroups, and I can tell you that both learn in very unique ways. Being the mom of these two amazing kids, it's my responsibility to learn and grow and teach and support and promote their education. I use, well, my son uses multiple resources that the school district has to offer, and I am thankful every day for those resources and for Ms. Mack, who loves my baby. So I spend a lot of time at Lee's Summit Elementary. They know me well. And because I am so involved, I'm also involved in various groups throughout the community, and I was made aware of the recently released data. And I've attended many meetings and discussions regarding the data, as well as meetings to discuss the equity and the proposed Equity Plan. The results of this study for our school district are both frightening and sad, and the data confirms that there are still major issues that lie within our school system, and these regard the academic and opportunity gaps. The time to act is now. We can no longer keep pretending that these issues don't exist. We have an opportunity to do what's right for every child and give all children the level of high standard education that our schools are able to provide. Education and opportunities for children should not be based on the color of their skin, on their family's economic status, on their special needs, et cetera. Fair and equal opportunities is a right that every one of our children has, possesses. We not only have the opportunity, but we have the responsibility to act. Our children and our community deserve better. I believe it will not only aid all the children from our town, but will in turn make our community a stronger and better place to live. This plan incorporates goals to provide all the community's children with the same exceptional education, the same opportunities and services, the same rights, and the chance to not only learn, but support diversity and differences. Isn't that what we want for all of our kids? Every possible chance to be successful, to grow up in a community and country that understands and supports one another, or at least respects one another. As a parent and community member, I affirm my support for the Equity Plan as developed by Dawn Smith and the Department of Equity and Student Services. I had the privilege to personally review the plan and give feedback as part of parent meetings, and I'm excited about the benefits that this plan will provide for every child. I urge you all to affirm the Equity Plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next up, we have David Poynner. Did I say that right? David?
Poier.
Poier? Oh, that's nice, David Poier. All right, David, you got it. Go for it.
Madam President, thank you very much. Board members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here.
Absolutely.
I'm here actually as a supportive boyfriend to Kristi Engelman over there. She spoke eloquently, I think, about what we're all here about. And actually, I'm kind of an outsider a little bit. I actually have two children in the Blue Valley School District, and I see some of the equity issues they deal with. It's kind of a different thing. They have families from, actually immigrants from other countries coming in as English is their second language. And my kids learned a lot from the equity programs they have there, and I actually sit here, and I kind of put my name on the list, because I was like, I was thinking, there's going to be a bunch of people that were wanting you all, trying to convince you to not vote for it. But that's the exact opposite. The whole community, as I see it, is out here saying, "We want this. We need this." And I'm sitting to myself, where are the people that are saying not to do this? I'm not even sure where they're at. Where are these people? Because they're not here. And if you are here, stand up, because I'd like to see one good reason not to have the equity program here. And I believe in y'all. I feel like you're going to do the right thing. And one thing I just want to leave you with, and I won't take a bunch of your time, is remember this, the whole, the whole is greater than the sum of our parts, right? The whole is greater, and as long as we bring everybody up along, the community gets stronger, everybody gets better. Everybody gets better when we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Mr. Patrick Courtney. Patrick, come on up. It is your turn. Yes.
Members of the board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in support of the Equity Plan tonight, although I'm afraid I can't do it as eloquently as many others have before. My wife and I have four children enrolled in various programs throughout the district. Our children vary in age and gender, but also in race and ability level. We have a daughter who is white and three sons who are white, black, and Asian. Within our family, we have typical learners, gifted learners, and a child with special needs. My child with special needs learns differently than my child who is gifted. My son, who is black, faces different challenges than my daughter, who is white. As parents, we provide differently to meet our kids where they are. That's equity. It isn't a zero-sum game. The needs of one child aren't sacrificed for another. They're each provided with what they need for the same end goal: success. That's my family, but it's also our community. My family needs a school district that will strive to provide the best opportunities for the full range of demographics and academic needs. We all need a school district that strives to provide the best opportunities for the full range of demographics and academic needs. The Equity Plan being voted on tonight represents the first step in determining what can be done and what needs to be done to provide an equitable opportunity at success for all of our students. Each of the six goals are worthy of the time and expense associated with their pursuit, and I strongly urge each of you to vote yes on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Mr. Michael Seibert. I hope I said that right, Seibert?
Close enough.
Well, no, I want to get it right. What is it?
I apologize, I'm recovering from the flu, so I can't speak very well. Thank you. I think everybody has the same, the same goal with our kids in the district, is to make sure every kid has an opportunity to get the most out. And I guess that I'm going to be the one voice of dissent in the room when it comes to this Equity Plan, and it's not that I think the goal's a problem. I think that after I've read through this plan, I don't see the details. And for me, the, it's more of an outline, and I'd be much more curious, was you get into Goals 4 or 5 and you're moving through there, what is the methodology or what is your policy going to be to institute that? You say you want to hire a more diverse workforce. How? I mean, how are you going to get there? Are you going to ask everybody that applies for a job here to, "Hey, let me get a picture of your driver's license, so we can see what we think you look like?" I mean, it's a, it's a very tricky area, and I think as this plan is right now, I don't think you have the details, and if you go forward with this kind of thing, I think you could see yourself being investigated by the EEO. You might even be opened up to a lawsuit, because it's the old expression, "The devil's in the details." How would you execute this plan? I think that's the thing that a lot of us would like to see before the, we spend a lot of time in court or settling lawsuits, is how are you going to implement this, the methodology? And I think the other thing, when I'm hearing people speak and we're talking about subgroups, for me, I'd be really interested in more detail, if you could publish more detail. When you take surveys of how you're arriving at your data points. So like, for instance, our family is very heavily French, Arcadian, Creole from New Orleans. We've got Cherokee, Irish, Welsh. We, you know, we never took one of those DNA tests, because we thought we'd break the test tube when they tried to figure us out. But I would be more interested in hearing more details at some point about, when you talk about all these different subgroups, and I have two kids who are special needs, and we've been through the IEPs and the 504s and all those different programs, I would just like to hear more of the methodology when you get data and you put it out to the community. I think that's the thing for us, is we feel like in the community, we're, there's kind of a sense that we're in an information deficit, and now, I don't know if that's because, you know, I've never been to a school board meeting in my life, first one, but I think that you don't dismiss, there's 90,000 people in this district. Not everybody is motivated to come to a school board meeting. You know, there's a lot of Girl Scout and Boy Scout volunteers and people that are doing things all the time, but it doesn't mean they're not paying attention. I wouldn't discount them. So I guess my statement, I would think, is I think you need to take more look at this, and I think this five, six, seven pages, whatever this plan is, before you vote and start executing that, I think this should be like 27, 30 pages where, you know, line by line, you're telling us, "This is a goal. This is what we're going to do, and this is how we're going to get here," because I'm not seeing that in this current form. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. We appreciate you being here. Okay, and our final speaker, no, I think I have one more after that. Okay, so our next-to-last speaker is Amy Congdon. Is Amy here? Come on up, Amy. She is a parent, and she's going to speak with us to, on the Equity Plan.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the proposed Equity Plan this evening. I am the mother of two students at Cedar Creek. My family and I moved to Lee's Summit in the summer of 2017. We knew nothing about the KC metro area and chose to live in Lee's Summit despite my husband working in Lawrence, based on the reviews of the school district. We are an Asian-American family, and racial identity is important to us, because we simply do not have the luxury for it to be unimportant. I want my children to grow up in a community and school system that recognizes the educational and social injustices that disproportionately impact students of color and push for ways to rectify these injustices. As I say these things, I am well aware of the stereotype that Asian-Americans have in this country. We are supposed to be smart, well-behaved, and passive. If it doesn't affect us, why bother stirring the pot? I am here to say that it does affect us. I will not be labeled a model minority as a way of placing the onus for change upon other minorities, and I will not allow my kids to be used this way either. So why should I, a Chinese-American mother with a son in the gifted program and daughter meeting academic... meeting academic expectations, be concerned with the achievement gap that exists between Black and Latinx students in comparison to their white peers within LSR VII? Because what happens as a result of knowing this data is a direct reflection of how those in leadership in this district view race and the implications it has had and continues to have in our education system. The work of discovering this gap and achievement has been done. Now it is imperative to take the next step. This step must include education of leadership, teachers and staff, as well as the implementation of new policies, procedures, and curriculum that address these issues. The proposed plan this evening includes all of these elements and has been put under scrutiny multiple times, revised in collaborative processes. And what you now have is a plan that is thoughtful, thorough, and comprehensive, while also allowing room for adjustments and the formation of specific tactics that will best serve students and employees of this district. If the LSR VII leadership agrees that racial identity of its students is important, then I hope that they will do whatever it takes, not only to educate themselves as to why some of these identities are historically and systemically disadvantaged in our society, but also make the necessary changes to ensure a more just and equitable education for all students. It is uncomfortable, painful work, but it must be done. My family is still getting to know this community. Overall, it has been a positive experience, but observing the conversations about race and education over the last six months have been very discouraging and, quite frankly, alarming. We want our children to grow up in an environment where racial injustice is taken seriously and addressed. It is not enough to be a school district that is great for some while others are left behind. We want our district to be known, not primarily for its highest achievers, but for how it treats those who have been deprived of an equal opportunity. This is only a first step, but it is a necessary step. For the sake of my children and other children of color, I am asking you to please vote yes on the proposed plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And our final speaker, I believe, is Marla Shepherd. Is Marla Shepherd here? I believe she is. Come on up and take the podium.
Greetings Superintendent Carpenter, Chair, and all members of the board administration. It's great to be here tonight. I'm here to speak in support of the Equity Plan. No system can be better than their weakest link. As we look at the data, I believe it adequately justifies the need for equity here in Lee's Summit. What do you do to ensure learning for children who don't fit neatly into the categories that you're comfortable with? What do you do for kids who look different than everyone else to create a space that effectively, that effectively meets their needs? The achievement gap is only the result of these items not being addressed. So I'd like to thank you, Dr. Carpenter, for having the courage to bring the data before the community. And I'd like to thank you in advance, board, for your consideration in adopting the Equity Policy. And I do want to say that I don't need details. I'm just glad that we have a policy, and I'm glad that we're committed to moving forward, because I have two little boys that I love dearly, and I want them, I want the same thing for them that each of you want for your children. And so I thank you for bringing this forward, and I thank you for your consideration, and hopefully it passes tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Marla. All righty, thank you to all who spoke this evening, and also, I want to tell you, thank you to the audience for being a courteous audience and good listeners. You get an A+ tonight. Moving forward, we're going to go into our items for decision, finance. I'm so sorry, I'm ahead of myself here. We each month report on the assignments that board members have, so we're going to start over to my right this time. Board Member Doan, would you like to share with us board committee assignments?
I would like just to take a moment of silence for our community friend who passed away, Diane Seif. She was to be my vice president for Lee's Summit Care, so I just would like to take a moment. She battled cancer for a couple of years, and she passed away on February 1st, I believe. Could we just take a little bit of silence, please? All right, thank you. We had a mayor's character breakfast, and it was a success. If anybody wanted to hear our community and what great things we have going and what great people we have, that is one place to be. So I was appreciative of this board being there, so. And I think that is all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Board Member Doan. Now we'll hear from Board Member Smith.
On February 25th, we will have a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. It will be held at Meadow Lane. We've been trying, over the course of the last year, when we have CAC meetings, to take those members out to the different schools, so they can see the different programs that are going on. Then on February the 27th, we have a TIF Commission meeting concerning the, well, involved with the sale of the Methodist Church in downtown Lee's Summit. So we'll be holding a TIF Commission meeting that night as we look at tax increment financing for that piece of property. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Board Member Smith. And I'm going to move down over here to Board Member Murdock.
Just real fast, January 31st, a few of us were at the Cooperating School Districts of Greater Kansas City Legislative Dinner, and got to hear about some of the legislative priorities that are coming up, coming out of Jefferson City. Those of you who like to track those things, there's a couple of bills that could impact our district, and Jackie might actually talk about a couple of those, but, so, anyway, that's where we were, and that's all my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Murdock, and now we will hear from Board Member Fritchie.
Okay, Dr. Carpenter already mentioned a little bit of Lee's Summit Educational Foundation information about the 20th Annual Taste of Lee's Summit. It's our biggest fundraising event of the year, so please, if you want tickets for that, do so in the next day or two, because there are only a few tickets remaining for that big event, and that's on Saturday, March 2nd. And the proceeds go to fund peak grants, student scholarships, classroom technology, and much-needed funding for a fund that we have called Helping Hands in our school district that helps families in crisis in our school district. We've already helped several families this year with that fund. Foundation also rolled out their new platform for student scholarships and peak grants. Deadline is March 5th for those. If you have anyone who wants to submit for a scholarship, any seniors out there, to date, we've had 207 scholarship applications and nearly 20 peak grant applications. Real quickly, just a couple of other places I just want to mention. January 28th, Campbell Middle School had its, I believe, its third Equity Forum, and I attended that. Again, I believe that's, I've been able to attend two out of three of those where they are seeking solutions to the achievement gap at Campbell, and so I'm really enjoying getting involved in that and seeing what they're doing over at Campbell. February 4th, I was the guest speaker for Kathy Nash's Teacher Educator Academy Class Summit Technology Academy, and we discussed the role and responsibilities of the school board. And are there any students of Mrs. Nash's still out in the audience right now? There you are. Okay, would you stand up, please? They were great. They were very attentive. Thank you for coming tonight, students. Yes. This is, and Mrs. Nash, where's Mrs., back there? And Mrs. Nash, stand up. Thank you very much. She does a great job with our future educators, and I just wanted to say thank you to those students for being here tonight. That's a class assignment. They have to come to a board meeting, so, anyway. That's it for me. Thank you.
They picked a good board meeting to attend. All right, thank you, Board Member Fritchie. Now we will hear from Board Member White.
My report will come up in just a minute, the finance report.
Excellent, thank you, Board Member White. And now I will go to Vice President Clark.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I've been pretty sick for the last, most of the last month, so I've been kind of out of commission and just basically getting to work. One of the things that I was able to participate in for the district was the Missouri School Board Association Legislative Day in beautiful Jefferson City. This is not the best time to see the Capitol. It's wrapped in Tyvek, and it's being renovated in advance of January of 2020. So if you're planning to go see it, just understand you won't see it like you expected to see it. There were a number of great things that we learned at that meeting, and I'm happy to discuss those with anybody after the meeting, but in the interest of time, and since Ryan has shamed me into being specific about bills, I'm going to start out by saying that House Bill 77 is of great concern to our current and past educators who are retired. And that is a bill to, I'm just going to say, modify the pension program, and I've seen a great deal of concern expressed about that particular bill, so be advised if you're not aware of that to date. There's also House Bill 478, which is an education savings program, and that is of concern to public schools in terms of redistribution of revenue. Let's just put it as succinctly as possible. And finally, of my triumvirate here, House Committee Substitute for House Bill 581, that is the Charter Schools Bill for an expansion of that particular program. And I know that many folks have expressed concern about that bill, and it has not yet hit the floor, I don't think. Sometimes, yeah, well, they thought it was going to be this week, and we're done for this week, so it could be next week, yeah. So, they don't meet on Friday down there, so if you wish to express your opinion to your legislator, this is a good time to do it.
Thank you, Vice President Clark. I will keep mine short. I did attend the Chamber of Commerce Dinner with several board members. It was a really great event, always is enjoyable every year. I serve on the Team Lee Summit Committee with Ms. Doan, Board Member Doan, and we've had two meetings each year. Deborah Del Sim has stepped in and has done a fantastic job helping us facilitate that, and we collected surveys from staff members across section of the district. Each year, we send out a survey, and some participate and some don't. No names attached, so we don't know who they are coming from, and we are in the process of dissecting those. We broke into groups, discussed them, and this is like the right arm of the district. That's kind of how I see this Team Lee Summit. They make recommendations to the board and to the staff for salaries, benefits, workplace environment. They do a lot of great work, so. And we have four more meetings set, I believe, Deborah, or five, you know, four or five. So it's, I enjoy serving on that team immensely. And then finally, getting ready, I believe Ms. Maxwell, we're collecting Teacher of the Year applications as we speak. Excellent, that's coming up. I will be serving on that committee again. It is truly one of my favorite ones all year, because I love hearing from the teachers. They inspire me, and it's also a reminder, especially sitting on the board, it's a reminder of how phenomenal our teaching staff is in this district, and how we just continue to get better and better each and every year. So with that said, now it is time to move into items for decision, and now I'm going to turn it over to, I believe, Mr. Board Member White.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee report is as follows. Our investments through January totaled approximately 153.9 million. I might note here, since we have a large audience, for everybody's edification, we are not allowed to invest in the stock market. We invest strictly in CDs and other investments that are specified by the state. We have seen an uptick in investments because of the increased CD rates and bank rates. They've gone up quite a bit. So that's just a little bit of information for you all. The expense percentages are well within our expected budget parameters, and the current fund balance for January is 47.27%, which will start to drop off as our revenue stops coming in from taxes and we begin to pay out our teacher salaries. Our construction and maintenance update, updates were provided for in process and completed projects, which included the Woodland Sewer Improvements, middle school track resurfacing, Bernard Campbell intercom replacement, Westview Rift replacements, and Lee's Summit West retaining wall improvements. Hawthorne Hill Elementary temporary construction easement. Administration recommends a temporary construction easement to Whispering Woods Land LLC. All work is scheduled to be completed by August 1st of 2019. The developer school district and city of Lee's Summit worked through a mutually beneficial design solution, which involves relocating the existing prior road entry drive to a new neighborhood road being constructed in Whispering Woods. And this is an extension to a project that we had already approved earlier in the year. Creative Smarts Incorporated, Greg Tang, a request for proposal process was conducted for professional learning and mathematics for certified staff in grades K-8 for the 2019, 2020, and 2021 school year. The district recommends Creative Smarts Incorporated, excuse me, Greg Tang, to provide the professional development at a cost of $81,400. Cooperative Purchasing Service Venture. The district is recommending adding an additional cooperative contract, cooperative purchasing venue, to its current list of approved cooperative agreements. We purchase many things through co-ops to save quite a bit of money for the district and enhance those things. We are adding one more co-op, hopefully, to that mix. Mosaic Cloud-Based Point-of-Sales System. The district is in need of a more robust nutrition services system, and Mosaic was determined to be the best choice for the district and had the most features and reports to offer. Mosaic will bring the department up to date in nutrition software. The district will utilize a cooperative contact through TIPS for the new point-of-sale system. Hall Pass Visitor Management System. Hall Pass is a visitor management system currently used at elementary schools. After discussion with the district's executive team, administrators, administration recommends implementation of this system at all school sites and the Stansbury Leadership Center to check visitors into our buildings. Okay, I have two motions. First motion, 7.02, to approve the transfer of $1,981,271.38 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to make a quick comment to clarify some things.
Yes, push your button there, please. Okay.
On the, on the Greg Tang math, that's not a decision that's made up here by the board or by the staff that are sitting here. That is based on recommendations that come from staff, through our lead teachers, through our, a variety of people, as they look at the different programs that are available. That is a large sum of money in the budget, but again, those are decisions made, or recommendations are asked for from, from whatever department. In this case, it's mathematics. I just want to make that comment.
Thank you very much for sharing that for us. Any other comments that we would like to make? All right, at this time, we will take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Very nice. All right, you may continue.
7.03, to approve the treasurer's report and the payment of bills.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, we will now take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All righty, very good. We have approved the treasurer's report and payment of the bills. Thank you, Board Member White. Outstanding job to you and the Finance Committee. Next up is items for decision. You'll see up, hopefully you'll see that up there, yes. We provide a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. The board member has done, the board members have done their due diligence, have read through these, have asked any questions that they may have of these. So at this time, we have items 8.01 through items 8.06, and I'm asking for a board member to make a motion for approval.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, the be items 8.01 through 8.06.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments that we'd like, anyone would like to make on these? Okay, with no further discussion, we will take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Very nice. Those have passed. All right, we'll move to number nine. This is also items for decision, consent agenda. These are items that are new contracts over $5,000. And once again, they have been grouped together in one group, and board members have done their due diligence, read through them, and asked any questions. So I'm going to accept-
So I'm going to accept right now a motion and a second.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items, contracts over $5,000, 9.02 through 9.09.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I do believe, I saw Mr. Murdock's red light turn on. So, Mr. Murdock, you have the floor.
Yeah, just real quick, and this is only because I got, I asked a question about the phone system and I got the answer, I believe it was from Dr. Gates, right? Or whoever answered that particular question. My only concern is on that particular item, are we expecting any more of the middle of the road kind of fixes that we need to do before we're able to enter into the second phase of that particular contract? And that's just because I was just a little unclear on that particular answer.
A lot of the work's going to happen over spring break. Basically, what it's doing is virtualizing the system instead of having servers at multiple locations. It's going to bring those into a centralized system.
We don't, and we wouldn't anticipate like having another, because essentially I read this as an addendum to the previous contract, right? So.
There'll be one more, potentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All right, at this time, I will call for a vote approving items 9.01 through 9.09. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Excellent. Those do pass. Right, now we move into items 10, and this is our items for decision, and these we will vote on separately. We have two items here this evening. The first one is item 10.01, and this is the Lee Summit R7 Equity Plan. I, at this time, intend on turning this over to Dr. Carpenter.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, school board members, you had an extensive work session. I think we went over the allotted time as there were three topics and we only dealt with the one that was the Equity Plan, and we will bring those other topics back next month. Dawn Smith and her group did a great job of taking us through what the Equity Plan looks like and what it can potentially mean for the children of our district and community. She's going to present, along with Dr. Collier, a few slides here. One thing that I would be remiss if I didn't say relative to the plan, as we talk about details in the plan, this plan is contingent upon our willingness to show up as learners. It's not until which point we do some significant learning that we actually know what are the appropriate fine-tuned action steps. So I think what you'll see in each of the areas is the opportunity in a learning organization for all of us to show up as learners. And the number one thing I think you'll see in this plan, minus those goals that are so carefully outlined, is that it starts right here around this dais. So there was some concern I heard expressed during the week about teachers and it's just more for us to do and the like. And I had a pretty good time to share briefly with our administrative team, our academic leadership team today, because it's a fair argument to talk about if we do something more new, better, and different, what do we stop and what do we amend when we do that? That's a fair question. But I would also say that does not stop us from doing the work of making certain that we employ best practices that effectively enhance the learning and lives of all students. So what we're going to do tonight is take you through briefly, and I knew that many members of the audience would be here to learn a little bit more about the plan. You all have already taken a deep dive, but I'll turn it over to the team to take us on an abbreviated version of that and then hear from board members and ultimately ask for your action as recommended by this superintendent this evening. Katie Collier, Dawn Smith.
Good evening again. It is our pleasure to speak with you and be able to present and highlight publicly the LSR7 Equity Plan. So there's been this notion that the board presented to us, I think it was early fall, about this notion of deliverables. So when it comes from the area of instruction, we've attempted to be very sequential and intentional about meeting timelines and bringing to you deliverables that have for you specifics and define for you how those impact positively the lives of the students that sit in our classrooms every single day. And that's the intent here. So we promised in presentation in November, Ms. Smith indicated that we present to you in February an equity plan, and so we're delivering that plan to you, board members, tonight. And particularly because it links to our Board Priority One. And Board Priority One is about raising the achievement of every child through a focus on innovative practices, student well-being, and equity in program design and implementation. This past summer, during an instructional work session, our team presented to you this notion of a plan for performance. And that plan for performance defined for you that we were going to work to implement and be mindful about equity in program design and implementation. And the equity plan that you have before you this evening seeks to achieve that goal. In addition, it takes into consideration the well-being of every single one of our students that sit in our classrooms, because every single student matters and we know our staff work tirelessly every day to meet those needs. And it's our job to support our teachers in their efforts and desires to do that, to achieve our district mission. And then relative to innovative practices, just recently, we brought before you the portrait of a graduate. And in that, we talked to you about five competencies that were going to be necessary for all of our graduates to achieve when they walk across the stage so that they're ready for life, career, and workforce. Every single one of our students needs to achieve those competencies, and Equity Plan helps to meet their needs all the way throughout that educational experience that they have. So I'm going to turn it over to Dawn Smith, who's going to talk to you about the plan in and of itself. And there are some details within the plan, once we start to live that plan that, quite frankly, we can't begin to define for you tonight. Because why? When you live a plan, you monitor and adjust based on the learners that the plan is designed for. And the plan is designed for both student and adult learners. And based on the response of those learners, the plan would be adjusted as we go forward. So while in some respects, it may appear to be high level, that's the intention of the plan. And then our job as administration is work, to work on the granulars, if you will, with our staff to deliver the specifics and the results to the Board of Education. So Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. Madam President, to our Board of Ed and to the superintendent's leadership, leadership team and Dr. Carpenter, just as Dr. Collier said, tonight, we're going to focus on Board Priority Number One, and that is to increase achievement with a focus of equity. And so when we think about headlines and we think about the word equity and we think about student achievement gaps and we think about that as a challenge, that is not a new challenge nor is equity a new word in this place called education or in school districts. So when you see these headlines, this is a, this is a challenge that all school districts grapple with. What are we going to do and how are we going to respond when we have a student achievement gap? And so our district is not any different. But the question becomes, how do we move forward and what do we do? And so in November 2018 Board Meeting, some were deliverables, just as Dr. Collier outlined, were discussed with the board. And so of those deliverables was one, district-wide ongoing learning, professional learning for our board, our superintendent's leadership team, our district building leaders and staff. And so how would we accomplish that? Through the RFP process. So it's not one person's decision about the who, but about the when and then how do we support staff? We want to reinforce our practices, looking at them with an equity lens. We want to enhance what we're already doing in our multi-tier systems of support to make sure that we support our students' social, emotional, as well as their behaviors, because we know that it's important. Our teachers work very hard every single day. And some of these practices, yes, they are doing, but how do we then create or bridge that gap so that all teachers have those skill sets to definitely be equitable to all students in terms of supporting them? Analyzing special programs. Here, we want to include more programs to align opportunities and talents for our students. Our students are who we serve, they are products of our school district, and how we serve them and what we offer to them is very critical and it's important. But it's meeting every student where they are and it's providing additional programming to do that, even if it means increasing programming. We want to lead and participate in conversations with our community, and that means learning. If I had to poll everyone in this room or I had to poll certain groups of the community and ask them, well, what's your definition of equity? Well, I don't believe that I'll get the same answer. And that's okay, because in our school district, what we have to do is engage in this learning together. And so that becomes, what is our definition of equity? And what does it look like in LSR7? And joining in our community, partnering with our community is very important. Our school district cannot live without this community. It is very important. This has been a topic that we all have to engage in, because at the end of the day, our students are what's important. But we have to enter into a space of engagement and learn together. We also want to make sure that we align strategies and resources in our goal with our continued school improvement plan, and that is Destination 2021. And so those points were discussed with the board. And so what does that collaboration timeline looks like? I want to honor the work that has already been done and celebrate some successes that we do have. This work in terms of equity and diversity, inclusion didn't start when Dawn Smith came here. So I want to honor those diversity team members that are in the room tonight, because just as Ms. Dunlap has pointed out, this work started in 2007 or earlier. And so, yes, it has been a boulder, but we're going to keep on pushing through. The collaboration and the learning timeline happened beginning in October 18th, but prior to that, some of this work has been done. But sustainability is now where we need to head, and we have to do that together collaboratively with our students, with our parents, with our teachers. And so through this process, we engaged in learning together, we collected feedback, and from that feedback, there were four main common themes about what it is that we want from this, what it is that we want in the plan. And I can tell you that four of those themes that came through that collaboration and that feedback was professional development was number one. A common definition for equity was number two. More resources for our parents and our students was number three. And more programming in terms of middle school students, because there is a gap there. We have a lot of programming in high school, but what about the middle? Through the collaboration process, we also entered into a space of learning. Part of that learning was utilizing board-approved Educational Advisory Board EAB research. And in that research, there were five districts that mirror the demographics of our school district. And so what did we hope to gain in that learning? We employed the research from EAB to focus on several areas. One was professional learning, the other was staff buy-in, and the third was, how do we assess our progress? Because at some point, we have to assess where we are. And just as Dr. Collier mentioned, if we're not getting there, then we readjust. This plan can change to make adjustments to do what is right for kids. Out of the EAB research, there are a couple of key observations, very briefly. Number one, demonstrate a commitment from district-wide leadership is key and it is most valuably important. Number two, honoring student voices. As you heard Link speak tonight, we can no longer not mind student voices. They matter and they are very important in this work. Number three, partnering with local colleges and universities that already have experts around the topic of equity, of culturally relevant pedagogy or practices, especially when we're talking about underrepresented students. The next one was gauge perception through the use of surveys. Those are things that we currently do now, but how do we use our surveys to then gauge where we are in this process? What comes up for our students? What comes up for our teachers? And what comes up for our parents as well? The leadership commitments that came out of that research was a clear communication and a definition, again, of equity. Do we have that? So that's an area we know is not new, but we definitely have to get there. Articulate many facets of expansion and perception of diversity and inclusion, because all those things mean something different to someone. Garner early support for equity initiatives. Create committees. This plan will not live in the Equity and Student Services Department. As you can see throughout those goals, this plan lives in multiple departments, which is very key. A dedicated staff. So each one of the five districts that were polled in this research has a dedicated staff member that also leads equity and inclusion efforts and initiatives. Integrate equity into our budget. That's also in our plan. So what do these things tell us that we're on the right track? Other pieces of implementation of practices to gain support was use of district as a primer for equity discussions. So what is that being? That means we celebrate our successes. We know that we have challenges, but we honor what, the work that has been done and we celebrate small successes. Use consistent resources to help administrators with a common language about district equity goals. And develop clear equity inclusion framework, and that was what we hope to do in terms of LSR7 plan. The next slide talks about initial professional development and then ongoing. So as you can see, the resource, research supports, number one, common theme from all collaborative environments that we heard is professional learning, professional learning, professional learning. Begin with inclusion trainings. Use district-wide development opportunities. Integrate equity in discussions throughout. And then how do we assess what we're doing? Again, how do we assess our progress and then how do we make some adjustments? Tonight, the board was presented with information that outlined a complete packet of information. Not only was the Equity Plan, but it was also an executive summary, letting the board know, as well as our community, that the purpose of the LSR7 plan is to provide a framework for our equity-based work and to support the identified recommendations through the Academic Systems Review. And we hope that we did that, because one thing for sure is that we want to keep students at the center. And so what goals are in the plan? Governance and leadership is number one. Why governance and leadership? Because as we look at our policies and do, and work toward developing a policy, one thing is for sure that what's in our policies and what we practice have to be aligned. They cannot live separate from each other. Developing an equity policy is not uncommon when you have an equity plan. We are one of five large school districts in the metro area, and I can tell you, out of five, there are two within that big five that already have an equity plan, equity policy, and so it's not uncommon to have. The one thing that it does do is it further affirms our commitment to our actions. Two, professional learning and development. Focusing on professional development to put, to support staff with systemic equity work as well as decision-making protocols. The third goal is curriculum and instruction. It supports the instructional program with an instructional framework and culturally relevant practices and pedagogy for learning. Goal four is student-centered in programming. That is enhancing our multi-system That is enhancing our multi-systems of support. Social-emotional learning is offering the trauma-informed care practices and strategies that we use to support students in aspects of their learning, their social-emotional, as well as behavior. Programming to support additional opportunities for students. Again, aligning talent with opportunity. It ensures that our budgets are used to be aligned with our school improvement efforts. Being fiscally responsible is also important. Goal five, parent and community engagement. Increasing or continue to increase our parent engagement and support school improvement efforts. Engaging community, again, in the learning process. What's very important as well here in this goal is giving parents a voice. Increasing support for students' needs that can be relational, that can be curricular, and it can be physical. Relational, an example of what we have going on currently is our power. Having students partner with a mentor to assist. Curricular, physical. We still have students in our school district that are homeless. We have foster students. And we have students that have physical needs that are not met every day. And so then the question is, how is a student supposed to learn if their first physical needs are not met? That's very difficult. And so we have and we want to align our partnerships. And we hope that they connect with us to fill that gap as well. Goal six, recruitment, hiring, and development and retention. We want to continue to work to increase staff diversity. We want to increase our partnerships in, with diverse organizations. And hopefully, we'll create a pool that will lend itself to that goal. We want to support staff and training relative to our LSR seven equity and culturally awareness.
In the U.S., equality is an important principle. So why isn't treating everyone equally always the right thing to do? The problem with equal treatment is that it doesn't always lead to equal results. Every plant needs sun and water. But that doesn't mean we should give all plants the same amount of sun and the same amount of water. A cactus needs a lot of sun and very little water to thrive. A tulip needs a moderate amount of both to produce a healthy bloom. A fern needs lots of water and just a little sun to grow big and bright. If you are planting a garden, you probably wouldn't place a cactus, a tulip, and a fern together and expect them all to thrive. But our classrooms are filled with students who all have different needs. By focusing on equitable treatment, we can consider those individual needs and then provide resources and support to meet them. That way, all students can thrive in school and life.
Equity is achieved when all students receive what they need when they need it to be successful. But most of all, in order to thrive. Thank you. And that concludes the presentation for the LSR seven equity plan. And if there are any questions?
Okay, at this time, I will open this up. Are there any questions? All right, Mr. Bob White.
In our workshop tonight, we made one minor change in the document. Well, is that the, what we're, we're going to be voting on the document as it was amended?
The word new.
We took the word new out. I mean, it's a very minor change, but it was a change. So I wanted to make sure that the document they were voting on is the one that was amended with that small change.
All right, very good. Thank you for clarifying that. Now, before we have any further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and take a motion. And a second, anyone want to make that?
I'll do it.
Go.
I move the Board of Education approve the proposed LSR seven equity plan as, as presented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murdock.
With the amendment.
As amended.
As amended in the workshop.
We need, as amended in the workshop.
Thank you, I'll second that then.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second on the floor. And now, at this time, board members, you have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments before we take a vote. I believe I see Mrs. Board Member Fritchie.
Yes, I just wanted to say, just for the sake of all of you sitting out there who weren't able to attend our work session that started at four o'clock today. We did have an hour and a half work session. Honestly, I walked in with a list of about 12 questions into that work session. And during that hour and a half, as Ms. Smith went through the plan and we had an opportunity to ask, all of us ask our questions and receive feedback and discuss ideas. I had every single one of my questions answered. And so I truly appreciate that. And the only other little comment I wanted to say was that I totally endorse that this, all, what you said all throughout was, was very accurate. That I really wanted to endorse what you talked about, working collaboratively with our students, our staff, and our community. Because I truly believe that collaboration, all of us working together is really is what's going to make this plan successful in our school district. And so I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice, Board Member Fritchie. And now, Board Member Murdock.
Yeah, I just wanted to make two quick comments on this one. Number one, and Dr. Carpenter probably might remember this back in November. I mentioned to him that I wish that we had wrapped up the equity as a part of the CFMP, that we had got it started even three months earlier than now. I thought we were ready then, but we're ready now. So let's, let's get, get rolling. The second thing I wanted to say is, just kudos, very nicely, very nicely done. I know, one of the things I hope that we can do moving forward is make sure that people will understand what our definition of equity is. I know, I know that that's a big one. And I think that there's a lot of misconceptions about what equity still is out there and how we are going to go about it. And we just really have to do a good job, and I'm looking at Kelly Waito right there, of communicating to people, you know, how the plan can be fluid as we move through this process. And that the, we have static goals, but the method that we're going to get there is probably going to change. And it'll change by building too, right? I mean, that's the whole point of this. So I just hope that we can get that message out to the community as quickly as possible.
Can I speak to that?
I would love you to, because you'll do a better job than me.
One of the things that's been really important as Dawn and I have worked together, as a leadership team and I have worked together as far as communications are related. You heard Dawn speak about the learning process of understanding of a definition, right? So part of our process as a community and as a team is to really finalize what the definition is. What does it mean to us in LSR seven? And as we work through that, yes, how can we communicate that? What does video work, look like with our kids, talking about with our staff, talking about it? And as we do that learning together, that's when we get to be able to share, share that common understanding with our community. So your point is very well received. And it's something that, as we run a communication plan for equity, that will be tag-teaming and embarking upon together with the community and with our team.
Thank you very much. Okay, Board Member White.
Yes, I had just a couple of comments to make. First of all, I really believe that this is probably some of the most important work that we have undertaken in this school district for an awfully long time, if not forever. And I can't think of anything that is more important than making sure that every single student has the same opportunities to become the best that they can be. That, that's, that, that goes without saying, that that should be what we're all about. So I applaud the efforts. I also want to say that, yeah, we've had, we've had these plans for a long time. They, they go way back. The, the gaps that Eric talked about, they've been here for, they've been here for an awfully long time. They've been here as long as I've been teaching. So why are they still here? If we're doing such a wonderful job of taking care of everyone, why do we still have these gaps? And it's not that anybody's doing anything wrong. It's not that at all. It's that we have to focus on what we can do differently. And if what we've been doing for the last 40 years has not yielded the result that we want, it's time to do something different. So it is now time to make that change and do something different. And I think one of the things that I love, I love this, is we are listening to the very people who we need to listen to, and that's you guys. You are the reason that we're here. And if we go through our whole educational process and no one ever bothers to ask any of our kids, what's going on? How are you doing? What's happening with you? What could we do better? What could we do different? And I distinctly remember in 1988, asking a class full of sophomores who were destined to all drop out, what would it take to keep you in school? And from that came a whole series of things that happened later on that kept an awful lot of kids in school. And it was because we bothered to ask the kids. Sometimes, and I'm going to offend a whole lot of people, and I apologize upfront. Sometimes, the worst people to make decisions about education are educators. Because we, we're so close to it, we don't always see it. And it's important that for some of us to step back and ask our students, and they, they can be second graders, what's going on? And I applaud the district's effort to ask kids and to bring kids into that conversation and to have them partially responsible for what happens to them. Again, good job.
Very nice, thank you, Board Member White. I'm going to go down to this end of the dais now. And I'm going to ask Board Member Doan to speak.
All right, I got the privilege to speak to Dawn Smith yesterday for about an hour. So she, the way she spoke here was the, she, she spoke then and I was very, I thought it was very smooth and helped me understand what I was reading on paper. So I appreciate that. So I'm really excited because what you're telling me is the dais gets to learn about this first. And I've said this before, but anyone that's like this is boring to me. And I love to learn about different people. So I'm really excited for us to be the first learners. I also want to just emphasize that, and I think Ryan said it too, but I'm going to be watching for some things. I'm going to be watching for collaboration between the students, the teachers, the administration, the community. That's how Lee Summit has always worked. And it has been very, very beneficial. So of course, I'm going to be watching for that. I'm also going to be washing, watching for the transparency. I think, you know, in, in our schools, we should have a section of what's been going on with equity. I mean, give these people that can't come here some information. And then, of course, I'm, I'm going to watch the cost. I mean, I, I, I'd say I'm a tightwad, so. And then I also want to, I want to mirror the CFMP. I mean, just like that, what I was talking about, being transparent. The CFMP team, and I know Kelly was a huge part of that, and we talked about it. But I want people to know what we're doing, so. And then there's that, there's one piece that's, that to me, and maybe I'll learn something different. But the equal, there is equal part in that one piece. And it's probably for me and my children will be going, yeah, we know, Mom. Is just, you know, if you're going to be tardy, everyone gets the same punishment. I, I, I just want, I want our students to be great workers. And that, that's one thing that I think should be equal. And, and maybe all, all learn a little different. But right now, Julie Doan thinks that equal. And I, I got to call out someone that's on the front row because that chick, Mrs. England, she knows how to get to those students. I have watched that woman in a gym. I'm sorry. Yes, Mrs. Rhonda Ireland. I have, I have watched that lady with the students in a gym. And those are like, those kids are like, Mrs. Ireland wants us, come on. I mean, she was taking a picture of these kids. And they just like, and they were on the bench for the basketball team. I was like, no, listen to your coach. But they, so she knows what's going on with those kids. Sorry, I got your name wrong. I'm a little nervous up here. But anyway, that's all I've got to say, and thank you very much, Dawn.
Thank you very much for that, Board Member Doan. And now, Board Member Smith.
I'm not going to take much time at all because of what Kim and Bob and some of the others have said up here. I, I, and actually, we, we had this work session this afternoon. But we got this material several weeks ago that we could look at. Kind of like Kim, I had some questions coming in tonight. Because I know this community. I probably know it better than anybody in here as far as, I've, I've lived it. It wasn't Strathair, it was Lee Summit. But I, 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 if you, we get the community on board, get them involved, things happen in this community.
Yeah.
They always have. And that's what makes this a Destination District. And I will firmly believe that. You heard me tonight in the work. This means the most to me of anything there. It's all kids. And we got to find ways to keep that boat afloat and get higher. And I, I applaud this group that have worked on this. We just need to get busy.
Thank you very much, Board Member Smith. And I believe I saw Vice President Clark press that button there, she would like to speak.
Thank you. I was trying to count. Math was not my strong suit, I will confess that. I'm looking, I'm, I'm all in on that. I like Greg, I thought that was very impressive, his presentation to us. And I was trying to count up what we heard from our community tonight. And it, it was nearly unanimous. And I think that was very important because everybody knows what we're doing tonight in this community. And I, I've been reflecting for many months. And, you know, we've, as a board, have gone through discussions. And I think the one back at our board workshop last, last June. Dr. Carpenter, just a reminder, I'm a private sector person. I'm not an educator by trade. So I've done some work around college-level education, but not, not K through 12. And, and I'm always amazed at the contrast in, in the, in the discussion. But sometimes the similarities, you know, when you talk about hiring and, and some of the challenges that the district faces. And, and I kind of go back to what my experience was in the district. And it was before I chose to run for the school board that, I was reading the Wall Street Journal on yet another plane, and I read a book review. And it was for a review of the latest book on Emmett Till. I didn't know who Emmett Till was from my history classes. Maybe because it wasn't a part of our curriculum, I don't know. I thought I had excellent teachers. And Manny was here earlier and among those for my history, my history classes. And, and then Dr. Carpenter introduced, has introduced us to many resources. The Missouri School Board Association has introduced us to many resources. I have a resource sitting on my front porch that I forgot to pick up, that I'm going to be reading. And one of the books that I read was a reference book, The Education of Blacks in the South from 1860 to 1935. It was written in 1988 by John D. Anderson. And, and that book was a stunning metaphor for what we've been discussing for so many months in terms of equity. And, and I think it's 2019. I'm so glad that we have this before us tonight and that we can, in my case, I'll be voting for it. When I mentioned the Missouri School Board Association meeting, you know, we had Dr. Delsem deliver the report in August. And in terms of hiring and the racial breakdown of our, of our teachers. Missouri teachers, the average is 93.2% that are white. We are 94%. Black teachers, 5% in Missouri. Lee Summit were 3.82%. It, it was, and, you know, I just go to these meetings and this stuff just comes at me data-wise. Our children. Our children, 75% white, and I want to ask for forgiveness here because sometimes I can't read these little slivers very well, aging eyes. 75% white, 13% black, 4% Hispanic, and 6% multiracial. And I do know that there are challenges for hiring, and it is very difficult in this current environment. We have the best candidates come to our district, and we are one of the best districts in this state. Make no mistake about that. People say that to us all the time at the meetings we attend. And I attend meetings other than NSBA. So, I think we have done some great work here. I think you all have put a great deal of thought and analysis. In the private sector, we don't, we don't get nine months typically to do this kind of planning. I've done plans over a weekend to address a crisis. I'm not saying we're in crisis, but I do hear from many constituents in our district that we need to take action and we need to move forward. The test score improvement was something to celebrate. Thank you to the teachers. Thank you to the kids. Thank you to the parents for working to be successful. I've asked the question over the last several months, actually two, and my question was, and I won't name the districts. What year would District X like to turn the clock back to to address its achievement gaps? And that's not us, it's other districts. We've seen it before us. And how many kids, what's your number, are you willing to be less successful than their peers? What's your number? Mine's a zero. This is a step in that direction. Thank you for your work, ladies.
Thank you, Board Member Clark. If I may, I'd like just to add a few comments as a product of this community. I've never forgotten where I came from. I had fantastic teachers, wonderful school bus drivers, food service there, school nurses, which my mom was one. I have, I'm a product of this community, and I've not forgotten where I came from. And tonight, Dawn Smith started her presentation right off saying, "We celebrate what's been done." And that was music to my ears because she went back and hearkened back to, "We've been doing great work. We've been doing it, now it's time to take it to the next level." And that just immediately hearkened me back to growing up in this great community. For me, a person that spends every day, seven to three, in an at-risk room with students with behavior and IEPs and different plans, for me, equity is not just a word, it's a way of life for me every single day. So, I really appreciate all of the work that you've put in, and I want to end my comments with something that you said that really grabbed a hold, and it's really truly in line with my philosophy as a board member and as a patron of this district. You said, "School cannot live apart from the community." And that was fantastic. Thank you for bringing that to us and, you know, keeping us mindful of where we've been, and now you're presenting where we're going. So, really want to applaud you, your team, Dr. Collier, great job. If you worked on this plan, could you stand up if you were part of that plan? I know there's some of you in here. Yes, we heard from a doctor, yes, there you go. Very good. All right. With that said, I believe we've had the opportunity to all share some words. And I believe Dr. Carpenter wants to offer one little thing before we take our vote.
So, before you all vote this evening, board members, I just think it's super appropriate to talk about, we picked this plan apart at least since January 25th. And for some people, we even heard it this evening, "I want more in the plan." For some people said, you know, "I'd be asking for more." And what I'm going to submit to us, if the board affirms this plan with its vote, is that the work of equity, we can do nice plans, but that's just when the work begins. It's a journey. And when the journey gets difficult, what we can't do is abandon the ship. And I think when you talk about, "There was something in 16, and there's something written down," if it's not happening, it's because of the difficulty, and we allowed ourselves to abandon the work. And when we do that, we do that on the backs of young people. So, how do we stick to this and not abandon the work? And I believe this plan allows us to do that, and here's why. Here's why. It allows us to do that because on a journey, you have to start with everybody. And right now, if I were charting this course and I was going on this journey all along, I'd probably have some more aggressive things there, given where I am. But this plan allows us to start with everybody, and I'm gonna borrow this from Ron Hyfetz, and I want to share this with you all. Hyfetz talks about leadership on the line, and he talks about how to survive change given the faces of danger that are out there when you're making change. And so, no one knows those faces of danger around the issues of equity and boundary no more than yours truly here this evening. I've lived them here, me and my family, for months, right here in this school district. And what that is, is fear, and it's the faces of danger. So, with this plan, what we try to do is negate that. And look at this, I want to teach you a little bit. If you look here, in that shaded area, Hyfetz would tell you that you're between the organization's threshold for change, meaning it needs to happen at the bottom of the shaded area. But he says organizations also have a limit of tolerance. And if you don't get to the threshold and you don't get up to the limit of tolerance, you're down there in the white part at the bottom. And look what Hyfetz calls it. He calls it work avoidance. So, those plans that we talked about from previous years, and when it going got tough, we didn't stay in that area in the middle, that shaded, Hyfetz calls that the productive zone of disequilibrium. And my understanding there, you're gonna do one of two things. You're gonna allow people to slip down into work avoidance. I would argue that that's probably what happened with previous plans. Or you can produce a plan, Dawn Smith, team, Dennis Carpenter Administration Community, that's so aggressive that you're going outside of that productive zone of disequilibrium, and folks are gonna shut down on you anyway. I think this particular plan puts LSR 7 in this community in that sweet spot. That's the productive zone of disequilibrium. But what Hyfetz tells us is you gotta live in that space. So, maybe after a year, this plan needs the heat turned up a little bit. So, we add to it because we're ready for that productive zone of disequilibrium to, in his words, "expand." So, I think this plan may not have everything that everyone wants, but for where we are as a community in our development, it's probably in our sweet spot. It's probably in our sweet spot to get moving, to get to work, and then, as we grow and learn together, we expand our productive zone of disequilibrium. But what we can't do is slip into work avoidance, and what we can't do with an initial plan is turn the heat up so hot that we lose people before the journey begins. So, I want to thank Dawn Smith, the team. You all were pretty modest as it relates to standing up. There've been lots of eyes, lots of players, and I appreciate what you've done. And at this time, we'll ask our board for a vote.
Okay. I believe that I have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Linda, we will take a roll call vote on this, correct? Or is this, we do not have to? All right? Very good. So, at this time, board members, I'm gonna ask for a vote. All those in favor of the LSR 7 equity plan as presented this evening with the amended word, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Very nice. Congratulations, Dawn Smith and team. Very good. We are now going to go down to Dr. Del Sim. We're gonna move into the personnel report. Are there any questions? Actually, first, I'm gonna take a motion on the floor for, to approve the Board of Education Personnel Report.
I move that the personnel transactions be approved as presented and contracts issued.
All righty, I have a motion and a second, and now, we may have some discussion here. Do we have discussion? All righty, very good. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
I need to abstain. I have a relative on the list.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, I'll do that one more time. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right. Very nice. Thank you. Dr. Del Sim?
Yeah.
Would you like to say something here? I'm sorry.
I believe Dr. Carpenter has a comment.
I'm so sorry. My bad.
As it relates to the personnel transactions, there's something that I'd be remiss if I didn't bring some attention to. And that is something that some of you may have already read in our local media. But I have a gentleman up here that's been my partner in crime for about eighteen months, and he's done a phenomenal job as it relates to district-level leadership. And man, it's been a short time, but we've tackled some tough issues. And I would tell you, he's always been there with us doing that work. That is Dr. Sharp. But if you've read the press releases or not, Dr. Sharp, I've tried to convince him otherwise, but he's told me he's a building man, and he wants to be in a building. And here's something he said that I'll hold him to, and I won't have to because he does phenomenal work. He said, "Dr. Carpenter, I'm 100% behind the vision that you've cast for our district, and given my years of experience, I can help facilitate that more at the building level." And as we had a couple secondary schools open up, he made that appeal, and I reluctantly supported his move over to Pleasantly Middle School. And he will be serving next year there as their building leader. We've shared with staff, they've spent time there, and that has been an exciting, exciting piece for that school community. But he's gonna be missed by this administration, especially yours truly, Dr. Sharp, in this role. But I know that you will keep the fire burning at the building level, the way you've done for many, many years over the course of your career. Thank you, sir.
All I have to say is those teachers, those students, everyone in that building's very lucky to have you, and I'm really happy for you. All right. At this time, we're gonna move into number 12 items of information for our viewing audience. These are written reports that we do receive from the various departments here in our district, and we have a chance to read them and go through them, and I don't certainly want to rush through any. We had three really good written reports. Facilities, students, thank you for being with us. I know you have probably a 5:00 a.m. call tomorrow morning. But I don't want to rush through this. I just want to recognize, we had three really nice written reports this month. Facilities and maintenance, maintenance as always, gave us a nice project update. Item 12.02, Career and Technical Education Program Evaluation. This lady, I've known her since I've been on this board. She does great work with our career and technical ed. And Shannon, you work with her as well. Shannon's a former student of mine. Love seeing you there. And then, item 12.03, Special Education Program Evaluation. So, we had three really great reports. Board members, are there any comments or questions you would like to make? Yes, Board Member Fritchie.
Okay. Trying to make it quick. I just want to say on 12.02, Career and Technical Ed, I'm reading through the improvement plans for career and tech ed programs in the district. I think it's very good to see that there's a focus on recruiting students in non-traditional pathways. I really like that detail in your report. For example, females in the engineering pathway, males in the nursing and healthcare pathways. So, I think that was really cool. And overall, the Perkins Accountability Data looks very good, very good also. And thank you for the instructors for all you do for helping our students on their chosen career paths. And I would like to mention 12.03, Special Ed Program. Congratulations to our special ed students and staff for exceeding state standards and targets on all but one area in this past year, and that's a great accomplishment in the sped world. Staff, you are doing a fantastic job assisting our neededest learners, and thank you for your care, your diligence, and your commitment to our students. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Thank you. Well said. Board Member Fritchie, anybody else? All righty, very good. For those that are left, we have a roundtable discussion. Anybody, do we want to just go person by person, or anybody just want to jump in, or does everybody have something to say? All right. I'm gonna start with-
Good. Here, 20 seconds, and I'll do my debate talking. So, my only two things are, three baskets in the last two and a half minutes at the wheelchair basketball tournament for Isaac's team, and they scored with 11 seconds left to win by two at their last tournament. And my son Eli's soccer team is now 28-1-1 since they formed it for competitive soccer. I'm done. Thanks for being here that long.
All right. Board Member Fritchie.
Okay. On January 23rd, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Purchasing and Distribution Department, who gave me, I met with their personnel and got a tour of the district warehouse. I enjoyed visiting with Krista Bataglia and all the staff members and hanging out in the huge walk-in freezer where they stored the chicken fried steak. That was a lot of fun. So, thanks a lot for showing me around.
Very good. Board Member White.
There are still a few tickets left for the Symphonic Garden Gathering, which is Saturday at 10:00. It's a brunch for pretty much women. I don't know that there's a whole lot of guy things going on, but you're welcome. And we're gonna have a whole boatload of really cool birdhouses for auction.
Wow.
None of them are musical that I know of, but the birds will like them.
Thank you, Board Member White. All right. Go down to Board Member Doan.
I just want to thank everyone for being here. I appreciate the support of our schools. That's all I need. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the students for the opportunity to be up here and represent your needs, and for the teachers that are out there and the support staff. This is a fantastic district, and we're gonna get better.
Well said. Board Member Smith and Vice President Clark.
Okay. Two things. January 21st, city featured some fantastic Lee Summit talent, Lee Summit, our three high schools at the Martin Luther King Celebration, and it was a fantastic evening of entertainment. And our mayor gave a very uplifting talk, and I hope that more folks will be there next year to enjoy this celebration of our community. And when they, when our students combined with the community choir, it was an amazing group up on the stage. So, I really loved that. And in order for us to carry our message further into the community, we have an opportunity, and it is through the City of Lee Summit, citizens, strategic plan, focus groups, and their meetings. All you have to do is go to city website and get signed up to be part of those focus groups and conversations. I think they may have some online surveying, just like Kelly's got some online surveying right now with the communications audit. So, if you are inspired to carry our mission forward into the community, that's one way to do it. That's all.
Okay. Very good.
Nothing to add, Madam President. It's been a long evening.
It's been a long but great evening. Just real quickly, I want to show my appreciation once again for everyone sitting at the dais and all the staff members out there that work so hard, day in and day out. And it's really been great to see some educators here, some friends, former legislator out here, Jeff Grisimore. It's just great. I'm going away tonight feeling exactly how I came in today. I knew it was gonna be a phenomenal board meeting, starting with our work session. I just want to thank you all. And of course, I've got to get a shout-out to our board attorney, Joe Hatley, who sits at the very end down there, and we appreciate you greatly. Thank you for being with us. And with that said, meeting adjourned.